And I'll start by asking, uh, Counselor Brown to introduce herself since she's, uh, here remotely.
Hi, Carrie Brown, District Three.
All right, thank you. Um. Take a minute to pull the agenda up. It's not, it's a straightforward agenda tonight, but. Seem to be having trouble logging on to the city's webpage today. Did somebody have a hard copy? Because I'm not, oh. Thank you. All right, well, thank you. Now, to get started, I want to, uh, mention a little bit about meeting logistics. Anyone who's joining remotely would ask you to change your, uh, name display on the, uh, on your screen to be your first last, first and last name, so we know who's, who we're talking to. Um, anyone who speaks, we'd ask you to start by stating your name and where you live. We ask you to keep your, um, comments to three minutes, although we may, uh, have some flex, allow some flexibility for that, for, uh, for tonight's public hearing. Um, anyone who's here to speak about a specific agenda item, please keep your comments to, uh, that item. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. And, uh, once you're called upon, you may make a statement, ask a question. Um, but, uh, if you go on too long, discuss non-German topics, you may be interrupted and asked to, uh, come back into compliance. Um, starting out, uh, is to approve the agenda. Is everybody satisfied with the agenda as presented? All right, we will consider the agenda approved. Next up, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Um, comments are limited to five minutes and, uh, we'll start, I don't see any hands raised online yet, so we'll start, uh, with people in the rooms. Or anyone in the room would like to be recognized? Um, Steve, and then the gentleman in the back. So Steve, okay, come on up, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, some of this overlaps a little with later in agenda, but this is high, high level stuff. Uh, last Friday, there was a huge, uh, vomit in the alley between Bear Pond and Bohemian Bakery. Uh, but I learned from emailing Public Works that people are on four 10-hour days. So there's nobody to go clean that up. So I borrowed hoses from various people. It took three long hoses to be able to reach there from the available spigot. Um, but that's, that's a type of maintenance and a type of emergent. Let's, let's call it almost an emergency type of maintenance that we should have provision for either the fire department or somebody should be able to do that, uh, on call because it's a health hazard. Um, I ran into a friend today walking, she's all booted up, casted, uh, because of the condition of the sidewalks over by Royal Orchid on Elm Street. And I had prior told you, she broke her foot walking on our sidewalks because of the condition of our sidewalk. And I've mentioned before that an elderly woman with a walker from Spring Street to Maine to state took an hour and a quarter, hour and a half because of the condition. And I walked it, I went and re-walked it to see what it was like, imagining that I was relying on a stroller. So this maintenance thing will come up in the context of the plan, but I just think that we need to have a way to, uh, get the garbage empty before it's flowing over onto the sidewalk to get the health hazards cleaned up. Um, the, the, uh, well, I'm not, I wasn't too prepared for the general businesses because I've been preparing all day for the plan. Um. Oh. Oh, the drains. Again, uh, we had heavy rain on the weekends. Uh, there was over a foot of water at Elm, uh, not at Elm, at school at Maine. There was 10 inches of water at Lewis and School. Uh, basically our, our drains were all clogged and we had made no provision for getting them cleared, even though we knew there was heavy rain coming. So all of those drains, volunteers came out and cleaned the drains, but you know, sticking your hands in blindly into storm drains, not knowing what you're going to grab hold of is not, uh, something that you should rely on volunteers for. Um, so those were the three things that were most immediate that I thought needed your attention. But again, when things get, you know, Bill Fraser's classic arm, reach out, write it down, and nothing ever happens. I, I believe there should be a spreadsheet of these issues that are raised in public comment that's available to the public online. And then who is it assigned to? When, when was the complaint made? Who is it assigned to? When is it going to get addressed? It's been completed, but basically be an audit trail. So, so there's some accountability in this, you know? Um, it's, it's not rocket science.
Thanks, Steve. I'll point out that today, uh, a press release went out about, uh, the flash flood and its aftermath, and the Department of Public Works will be completed, completing roadside repairs, removing gravel from the driveways within the public right of way, including storm, storm structures and culverts. There's a long list of, uh, impacted areas that are known, so it'll take a couple of weeks to make that happen. But, uh, we are, Vivar and the Public Works is aware of this. Um, sir, in the back, do you want to come up next?
Hello, uh, my name is Jacob Surgeon. Uh, I live at 14 Franklin Street for the moment. Uh, I'm here again with an escalation again, that now apparently I'm the criminal. That I was, once again, my family was harassed by Elliot Curtin, who again owns a business or lives at, uh, in the vicinity of Warm on the backside here, that again, he harassed us again. And I stood in front of his car because I was hoping we weren't on his property. Once again, maybe the police would come and help me. Nope, I'm the criminal for stopping traffic. And I may be, but I can at least prove selective enforcement. But apparently I'm not, I'm being a little too polite and callous. Why don't I say it a little bit firmer? He's a human trafficker. He is. We all know he is. I, because I know because I was friends with a lot of his workers. That there's still people who work right down here at the, uh, gas station, the, uh, Spanish themed gas station that know people, that, you know, he moves people around. There's a guy that who lives, who, quote unquote, lives in the apartment upstairs above me. He now lives in Burlington. That, I believe somebody was just talking about ICE and this, that you can't, Mayor, that you can't keep claiming that you didn't know after investigation. There's escalation. Another thing too, the Center of Independent Living did its own investigation because other people were complaining, for lack of a better word. Again, not on their own behalf, even though he went out into the town and, uh, accosted people. That, uh, apparently this one lady five separate times, that she put in actual like complaints to her job, not for her own safety, but for rats. Because he, he got told what to do and he did not like it, that this is 100% of retaliation that he using the police. And I know they know him because both officers came up and greeted him by name. That I am sorry that you guys condone this. You all condone this. You all know it. You, you can't keep hiding behind, you didn't know because I've been here a couple of times now. It's going to keep escalating. And again, I'm not going to hold the dogs back. I have been talking to people. I have did this, and they are very interested in my little Montpelier, that you guys are connected to a few more things than you're willing to admit to, Mayor. And you guys want to be connected to these people, you know, that he and these police officers go to that weird church on Saturday that we all know. That mass, I can't tell you because I've been protesting. I can't tell you the amount of homeless people that come up and thank me and for being a hero. Me, little white trash me, thanking them for being a hero, because officer, specifically officer Matthews has a, again, nobody wants to say she has, you know, complaints, but she does. They, uh, we don't want to admit it. I feel like I'm running along. But they are 100 afraid of retaliation. They're not, they, on the streets, the only thing you have is your health. That they don't want their legs broken, that they don't want to this, and they certainly don't want to be, um, accosted. One of my friends, Randy, he, uh, hangs out in front of the church, that he had rock stone at him and this, and he is, let's face it, a little addled. And he pulled out a hatchet and threw it at somebody randomly, and it happened to hit somebody. That maybe he might get his day in court, but maybe this, but like there's something sticking here in Montpelier Vermont, and you guys are connected to it, whether you want to admit it or not.
Sir, I'll, I'll just remind you that you have, you have been informed of the grievance policy within this, this police department, if you want to pursue it. Anybody else in the room?
It won't take you late after 45 minutes?
Ma'am, if you would like to speak, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else in the room would like to be heard? I do not see anybody online who's, uh, seeking to be recognized. So we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
There are no liquor licenses on there, but there will be a lot next week.
Okay, so the only thing we have on for tonight is the approval of the cruiser purchase. Is there a motion to approve that?
To approve the consent agenda, as you mentioned.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Next, we have the first public hearing on the, uh, on the city plan. Uh, Mike, you're up here, and while you're making your way up, I will open the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Miller, I'm the planning director for the city. And I just wanted to run through a quick presentation, a little video in it. And I'm, I'm not expecting it to take long because this is really more about hearing from the public than it is hearing about me. But we do want to kind of level set everything, make sure everybody's on the same page. So really quickly, I'm going to go through a couple of items. This should take, um, maybe 10 minutes. Uh, about where to find the plan, uh, so a quick video, this is the video that's online. Uh, we can decide if people don't necessarily want to view it, we, we can, can't. Uh, but I think it helps to give an overview of the plan itself and how to navigate it and some of the, uh, different tools that it has. And then we'll go through a quick history, summarize the 12 story maps and the implementation plans, and talk a little bit about next steps. So if anyone is, uh, online or here and is looking for the plan, if you go to the City of Montpelier website and you scroll down a little bit, we have a box that shows popular links. And in the bottom left, there is, uh, a quick link to the city plan 2025. And if you go a little bit farther down, we also have, uh, what we call the tiles. And if you hit the carrots on the left or right, you can change these. And one of them is also a link to the city plan. And there's a third link, if you happen to go to the planning commission, um, page, go to the boards and commissions, go to planning commission, there's another link there. So, um, let me see if we can make this work. It just comes through on this one, last time that we shoots. Ah, now you see people. All right.
Hello and welcome to the Montpelier City Plan 2025. This plan is different from previous plans in that it is a web-based plan. There is not a paper plan officially, although later we will show you where you can find a printable archive version, if that is easier for you to review. Because this plan is in a new format, we wanted to take a minute to tell you how to find what you're looking for. This video will give you some tips on how to navigate the city plan and interact with the storyboards. The first thing to note is that you are on the welcome page. You will notice three tabs along the top of this page, welcome, planned chapters, and additional resources. Also in this banner line is a search box, which you can use to help find certain topics. Let's start with this welcome page. You can scroll down the page using your wheel on your mouse or use the slide bar on the right side of the screen. The welcome screen will give you some information about the city plans in general and why they are important and how this plan was developed. The substance of the plan is found in the second tab, the plan chapters tab. If you click it, it will take you here. The Montpelier City Plan 2025 has 12 chapters, each a different subject area. And they are listed here in two columns and include topics like housing, economic development, resilience, energy, natural resources, and community services. To find out more about natural resources, for example, you will find two buttons below that icon. The first is story map, and the second is implementation plan. We will touch on each of these briefly. So let's first review story map. Click on any of the 12 story maps. And each will have the same subheadings, which are shortcuts to jump you down in the document. Each story opens with an introduction and a plan context. This includes background information and a preview of the plan. Importantly for this format, the plan context also includes interactive maps. In this first map, you will see a presentation of the city's natural resources. If you look at the lower right corner of the map, you will see a plus and minus sign. That lets you zoom in and zoom out if you like. As you zoom in, certain features may turn on or the resolution may improve. In this case, you will see that the parcel lines appear. Your mouse is also a hand that lets you pan across the city. Click the mouse button to grab and move and then release at your new location. If you want to reset the map, then hit the home button. The box on the upper right lets you expand the map to cover the entire screen. When you want to return to the storyboard, hit the expand button again. If you have a particular address in mind that you want to look up, you can find it by using the box in the upper left. Just start with the address number and street. For example, we can put in 39 Main Street to find City Hall. Hit return or click the map, the map, and the map will take you to that location. This particular plan has buttons to the right that allow you to look at specific features in the map, such as wetlands. Clicking the wetlands button resets the map to the home and shows you only that feature. Again, you can navigate the same way as before. The remaining story map has a discussion of how natural resources interact with the other chapters of this plan. This is what we called synergies. Then we have a summary of the implementation plan and a description of who is working on this topic within the city. Going back to plan chapters, we have a second button. Each chapter also has one or more implementation plans. Clicking implementation plan button takes us here. These boards have aspirations, which are the long-term vision for Montpelier, the goals, which break that vision into bite-sized pieces, and the very specific strategies which we intend to use to accomplish those goals. Looking more at the strategies, each strategy has a title, which lets you know if this is something new or if we're continuing something that we already do. There's a description and then some basic information for that effort, including cost, priority, responsible party, and which goals this strategy is addressing. The highest priority strategies are closest to the top. Our final tab is the additional resources tab, which includes a downloadable PDF version of the plan. This version has a cover and table of contents and is technically an unofficial copy of the original plan, which is this website. This version has a cover and table of contents and is technically an unofficial copy of the original plan, which is this website. If any discrepancy is found between the PDF and the website, it's the website that is the official version. This tab also includes links to several other plans that people may have interest in. Many of these are the building blocks of this city plan. These plans are generally housed on the official City of Montpelier website and links are provided to that site from here. Please keep in mind that throughout this plan, all information and maps are only as accurate as the date of adoption of this plan. Any changes and updates will be reflected in future amendments to the plan. We hope you enjoy the new Montpelier City Plan twenty twenty five. If you have any difficulty navigating this plan or finding what you are looking for, please contact the planning department at eight oh two 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 three nine five zero six or email at planning@montpelier-vt.org.
Alright, I know for some of you, you've probably already seen that, but we wanted to just give everybody a refresher of what's actually in this and it's a pretty good summary of the plan itself. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the details of it because I thought the video in six minutes kind of captures a lot of it. But for people who are uh, who aren't familiar with the city plan and the process of real quick history, for fifty years, uh, this document has been referred to as the Montpelier Master Plan. So you may hear people refer to the Montpelier Master Plan. Uh, we've changed the title um, for a number of reasons, but uh, technically this isn't a master plan, it's a city plan. And so we felt it was appropriate to to adjust the the title to accurately reflect what the document is. Uh, our current plan was developed and adopted in twenty ten and was amended in twenty seventeen. Uh, this twenty twenty five plan has been, is a completely new format and content. So we can't ask for a red line or what's different. Everything's different. It's a completely new format, completely new content. Uh, the process of developing this plan started in about twenty sixteen, developing goals and strategies, working with various committees. And uh, as we pointed out in the video, this is a web-based plan format with separate chapters for each topic. Uh, that wasn't um, the what, the way it was in our current plan. Current plan tended to group a lot of things together, like a built environment, stuff like that. Um, the new format, uh, there's also a new format for the aspirations, goals, and strategies with a goal of having a more uh, actionable plan. And this plan will be valid for eight years. We can always update it in the interim, but uh, plans that are uh, adopted are valid for eight years. Uh, which is why our twenty seventeen plan is expiring this year in December. So um, we have to make an amendment for that time. Uh, so the twelve chapters, as were mentioned, uh, have an introduction, the plan context, and interactive maps as the video discussed. Uh, the synergies, how this plan is related to other chapters. That's just an important piece because so many topics you really can't talk about in isolation. Where do you talk about public transportation? Is that an energy item or is that a transportation item? Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of overlap within the chapters and the planning commission felt it was important to have this conversation about the synergies. Uh, then there's also an implementation summary, and this really is just meant to hit the key pieces of the implementation plan. It doesn't go through all the details, but if you want to have a general idea of what the goals are and what we're going to do about it, the implementation summary, the planned chapter, the storyboard is really meant to kind of give you that high-level understanding of the twelve different subjects areas and then who's involved. If you're interested in understanding who are the players, that is also available. Uh, the implementation plan, within this plan, there are twenty implementation plan boards. There are only twelve chapters, but community services and public safety have a number of their own um, boards for each of the topics. There's a board for parks, there's a board for recreation, there's a board for um, the senior center. So we have these different different ones for those uh, two chapters. Um, as was mentioned before, each has one or more aspirations uh, and goals and the goals break the aspiration into pieces. And then uh, strategies, which is how are we going to achieve those goals? And strategies include everything that we currently do plus things that we want to do differently or some new ideas of things that we want to do. We really, when we were working on the plan, we really wanted to make sure we cataloged everything that we were doing towards accomplishing a goal and not just focus on what's new or what we want to change. We also wanted to recognize and uh, and record what we are doing. So in case somebody is interested, you know, what is it that we are doing about resilience, for example? You could look and see, oh, these are a whole bunch of things we're doing. And here are a bunch of recommendations for additional things that we want to try to accomplish in the next eight years. And it's an eight-year plan, so not everything will be done all at once. So you may look and see twenty implementation boards and a lot of things to do. Some of these are things that we already do. Some of these uh, might be low priority items that we're doing and recommending at another time. And so next steps, people uh, trying to figure out where we are in the process. Uh, there are a minimum of two required public hearings. Uh, we have scheduled them for May twenty first tonight and May twenty eighth next week. Uh, but council can have as many as they would like, as many as they need to in order to reach a consensus as to whether or not uh, things need to be changed. Uh, at the same time, we also have a regional approval process that is ongoing. Um, that regional plan approval examines whether this this plan meets state law. They are uh, legal documents. They have to meet certain criteria under state law. So the city has produced a report hailing how the city plan meets that requirement. And I can uh, provide that to folks who want it. And uh, but it is up to the CBRPC to make that determination and they are currently in the process of doing that review. If the council makes any changes to this document, uh, the changes will go to the planning commission for review and comment. They don't get any vote on it, but it's an opportunity for them to review what changes were made and be able to give you some input on whether or not they feel that it will impact uh, to regional approval ability or if it, or if there was a particular reason that they chose it, but um, that's an opportunity, that's a requirement in statute that if there are changes, that it would go to the planning commission for review and comment. Uh, and eventually, if people want to understand how this works, it will be a vote to approve or deny by council. Uh, in other communities, other um, other parts of the state. Uh, there may be a vote of the municipality, but it is in this case, the in the city of Montpelier, it is a vote of the council. So uh, contact information, if you have comments, um, because this is not only the public hearing tonight, but at any point while the public hearing process is open, you have thoughts and comments or questions, you can direct them to your counselor. You could also send them to uh, Evelyn Prim and her email is there, eprim@montpelier-vt.org, or you can send it to me, Mike Miller, mmillar@montpelier-vt.org. And we forward all of the comments on to city councils, so they have, uh, they have them. And that is it. We'll stop sharing. And take any quick comments unless you want to go straight to public comment.
Well, I wanted, I thought I would start by seeing if the council members have any questions for you before we go to the public comments.
I might just have one quick question, Mike. I don't know, maybe it might be for you, Kelly. I'm just thinking about, you know, looking at these and the different strategies that are identified. And I'm just curious about how it kind of cascades downhill towards department work plans or individual work plans. You know, so just like for an example, in utilities and facilities, they've got create new stormwater utility, right? And the responsible party is the Department of Public Works. But like, how does that, you know, it's an eight-year plan, right? So how does this, how does this plan that captures the long-term vision of the city or the eight-year vision of the city? How does it um, how does it kind of cascade down to work plans and actually become enacted? At a staff level?
Yeah, as this was being uh, developed and considered and we were trying to work on how we wanted to structure these uh, implementation plans, having them eventually build into uh, the annual strategic plans and into work plan and also into committee plans. Cause a lot of these were developed working with committees and commissions. And so um, sometimes people are on boards and they don't, what is the next thing we should be working on? Well, we've got a, an outline of things that could be considered for next year's projects. Um, the, when we developed this, the intent was we would start to work these together. So that way it was a little bit more of an integrated process of um, if these are our goals and this is uh, where we want to go, then we should review, at least review the city plan in these poli, in these projects to identify which are the top ones that we wanted to work on. And then start building them in. Obviously, a lot of what we do are core duties um, and core responsibilities, but um, there are also a lot of specific items that we're trying to accomplish with the energy goals, uh, complete streets, housing. Uh, so the hope was that we would have some direction as to where we wanted to go, but it's going to vary from year to year. Um, if we had developed this plan in twenty twenty two, who would have predicted in twenty twenty three that we would have a flood and it kind of would have changed the the dynamic, but the dynamic of what we would have in our work plan for the next year. But I think this gives us a good framework. And if things are moving in a regular course, that we could help to start moving these in. I would like this to be, the whole purpose of us doing it in this way was that way, we don't want to have another document for the shelf. We really want this document to be more of a document that we interact more with with the committees and staff, um, just to help give us that longer term. We're, we're always working in the trenches and we're, you know, got everything right here. Sometimes we need to look up and see where we're trying to get to.
Uh, thank you, Mike, for the presentation. Uh, I, I will ask a couple of questions, but they are related to each other. So first, uh, have we uh, measured the success of the previous plan? Is there any data? What happened? Did we succeed anything? Did we fail anywhere? So can we learn from our mistakes? Or we should improve things? So is there any data or have we do this? Second one, I will just list them, so then I will give uh, time to you to answer all of them. Second one, I check other city plans. Uh, some of them have numbers on it. They just like give specific, oh, we want to increase housing like every year. I'm just making up like twenty house. Some of them, they don't have any numbers. So is it optional? So did we choose not to put any specific number? Almost like a target um, in our city plan? Or it's uh, something that regional planning um, commission or unit, I forgot what we call. They prefer not to see any number, so it is okay for them. Because to me, if I don't see any specific numbers, it is really difficult um, to measure in couple of years, right? Are we successful? How many houses, housing unit we build or what happened? And we couldn't do it. And the um, third one, if you want to see some numbers or metrics would be uh, in the, like Ben was talking about, like departments or like working units plan or committees plan or commission plans. So what will be the strategy? Um, if you want to see some metrics and numbers. Thank you.
Alright, so uh, evaluation of the old plan. I haven't done anything now. Recently, when we were initially starting, we were trying to decide how much to try to pull forward and um, and this is true of a lot of communities and plans. It's, it's one of the things I, I kind of uh, work with my colleagues on at other communities is to try to get away from having a lot of policies that talk about encouraging and supporting because they're not really action items. Um, if you say, well, what we need to do is to support or encourage accessory apartments. Well, that hasn't really set yourself up to actually build any. You've just said that's what you want. So we don't, you'll find that in our current plan, but you won't find that in this draft plan because there, it's just not something that um, is a useful way of having a strategy. So um, sometimes evaluating the previous plan, there may be some things that we can go through and say we've done and accomplished, but there may be a number of them that you know, did we encourage this or did we support that? Well, those are all going to be a little bit more difficult. But it was just, it was a different plan written in a different, in a different format. Um, I will say we did look at the, the number of views on, online and the number of views of the draft plan during the public hearing process exceeds the views of the existing plan over the past four or five years. So it's certainly one of the criticisms of the existing plan is it's, it's, it's turned into more of a shelf document. And it gets pulled down by college kids when they come in to do the various projects and down and stuff, but uh, for the most part, it's not heavily used by staff or committees. Um, as far as I'm, as far as I know, um, because it doesn't get downloaded very often. So I think from that standpoint, that evaluation is, it's, it's not used. And our hope is that with the new format, we will have a document that's used. On the benchmarks, uh, this was a conversation that there was a lot of conversation on by the planning commission as to whether or not we wanted to have benchmarks or not. And we really wanted to focus first on, on the aspirations, what we want as our goals and what are we going to do about it? And if we get somewhat of a blessing that that's where we want to go, the next step logically would be, okay, now let's get some benchmarks. Because what was happening was we were spending a lot of time when we were deciding, well, do we want benchmarks? We spent a lot of time talking about, well, what would it be? How would we get that number? How would that be tracked? And at the time, we're like, well, we don't even know if city council wants this as our goal. And we're spending meetings and meetings talking about a benchmark for a goal that we haven't really said is our goal. So the decision by the planning commission wasn't that we don't want benchmarks. And there were some planning commissioners that really wanted them and some of them that were less um, less uh, interested in, in that. But um, our decision as the commission was, we should get this approved like this. And if we want to move in that direction of getting more benchmarks, then once we have, once we know our goals, then it would make sense for us to find, and not every goal has a logical benchmark. So we really have to pick which one. And then decide what would be the appropriate benchmark to apply to that. Um, because not everything, um, you know, historic preservation wants to talk about. You know, it's, it's important to have the community appreciate historic buildings. Um, we're having a hard time protecting historic buildings because in their opinion, they felt the community doesn't appreciate the value of what we have. And so we need to do a better job as historic preservation commissions, educating and teaching the community so that we, our goal as the HPC was to have the community appreciate the historic values that we have. Well, it's a very difficult thing to measure. Uh, you can't really benchmark that, but it, it kind of goes, so it, it was a bit of a pull. Um, but I think we can in the next step as we're moving forward. And um, as I'll point out, you know, this is an eight-year plan. Similar to the zoning, uh, we adopted the zoning. Every year we come back, we update the zone. Our thought was, um, as the planning commission was that we could take a very similar approach to the city plan. That if there's an interest in doing something, the housing plan needs to be updated or uh, resilience. We've done all the resilience projects because the resilience commission is doing a great job. Let's then go back and revisit that. Or if there was a goal of the council that said, we would like to have more benchmarks applied to this. And you could apply benchmarks without having them adopted into the plan too. But if we wanted them incorporated into the plan, we could move in that direction as well.
And, and Mike, following up on that, because I, I was thinking about that, because you mentioned earlier that we're adopting a city plan for eight years, but it can be uh, changed at any time during the eight-year period. To adopt changes for the uh, in, in the interim, does it require the same process of planning commission and two public hearings uh, to do that?
It, it does require the same number, but if we're talking about smaller bite-sized pieces, same with the zoning, the zoning has to follow the same process. They have an interim process that we don't have for city plans. But if you wanted to make a, a change to the zoning, you have to follow the full process. But when we're doing smaller bite-sized pieces, the process goes a little bit faster because we're asking for public comment just on one chapter or one section of a chapter or one implementation board or one something. So usually the process can move along a little bit faster because we've got a narrower room range of, of comments.
Thanks. Any other council members have any questions? Jim?
When I'm looking at this and things are in color. And some, I'm just going to take a statement here and And some, I'm just gonna take a statement here in red. Montpelier has a goal of creating six hundred housing units over the next eight years. Most of which would be rental rooms. What, why is that in red?
Are you looking at the? Storyboard?
Uh, no, I think it's probably the intro. Yeah. Right under where it says. Planning contacts according to the twenty twenty U S census.
Let's get to that real quick.
Uh, okay. Forty. Just wondering why it says most would be rental units and why is it in red and what does that mean?
Uh, probably. There we go, two dash one.
Page two dash two.
Two dash two.
The hard copy.
Yeah, so page two dash two. Uh, it's it, the red is just, it's just, um. It's not meant to be anything other than just a a change of the color as it's going through. Um. The housing unit uh goal, that is what was discussed by the commission. And uh, that's the. Revised. The revised number that came out of the um. The planning hearing process, so.
So that red doesn't mean necessarily anything.
No, it's just, if it's on, if it's on the screen, it just, it's as the screen is scrolling to make the paper copies, we had to. Cut it out of the web and insert it on paper and we just keep it consistent, so it may look different on the paper.
Okay. And Jim, you also had a question about why is the proposal of mostly rental housing?
Yeah, I guess who did that come from?
Uh, that's been in ongoing. I mean, uh, again, I guess I should be clear. Everything is on the table uh. For the council to change. If there is something that the committees, uh, staff, the planning commission. Um. That if anything, the council feels that the isn't. In accordance with what you agree with, then those are things that can be brought up and changed. Uh, that is where the. Has been the goal because of the. Washington County. Um. Housing needs assessment, we're really looking at, we need three thousand eight hundred housing units. And we have a lot of. Um, folks who are homeless and a lot of folks that uh are looking for places. Uh, employers who are looking to find places for their employees to live, a lot of those uh fall to. The having additional rental units. So it's not that we don't want the owner occupied, but it's the multifamily and in particular the rental that had been identified.
And in the. General split in the city where we're now about fifty-six percent homeowner and forty-four percent rental housing. The feeling was that. The rental is. Where we have the most significant uh under supply.
Correct.
Okay. And Adrian?
Process question. So um for the public hearing, we'll have the public hearing today and then one next week. I have tons of questions, and so when is it appropriate? I wanna hear from the public, so will will be an opportunity. Like at the end of the public? Like, what does that look like?
Yes, uh, it's a good point. I uh. I'm I'm sure you're not the only council member who has questions and and we're. Getting some of the high-level questions. What what I'm most interested in tonight especially is to hear from the public and see. What the comments are, because we we have two. Uh, public hearings scheduled, but but I'm also interested in, uh, yeah, and we have the ability. To make changes. We can make changes as early as tonight, but it might. Might be too big of a bite to try to start making amendments right now, but. Questions and concerns and comments from council would also be in order uh. For tonight, but since we set this as a public hearing. We definitely want to. Hear from the public. And in general, for comments from the public. To me as a. As a decider, uh, and every, obviously, anyone here, any member of the public can decide to make. Comment on any. Part of the. Uh, plan that they want. To me, I think it's it's most useful to hear. About the highest level uh items, the the uh. The goals and the strategies to see if uh if people think we're on the right track in terms of what. The goals should be and. A little less uh. Interested in in the smaller details, but of course. People are free to. Make whatever comments um that they want. But I think this might now be the time to. Open it up to public comments. We don't have a huge crowd here, and so I'll. I'll start out by saying we'll take comments, five minutes per person and. See how things go. Anthony, you're the first one with your hand up.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony Irapino, um, with the law firm of Bochek Irapino Law Office at thirty-five Elm Street. Um. I had the opportunity to comment. In my personal capacity, uh, when the planning commission did its hearings and a number of counselors were there to hear that, so I'm not gonna repeat those. Um, in fact, tonight, instead, I'm appearing on behalf of my client, Alan Goldman, whom many of you know as a longtime. Citizen of Montpelier, a foreign, former planning commissioner. And um. The owner of some of the most iconic and important parcels in the city. Including Saban's pasture, the Redstone Building and Crestview. Jocelyn Farm and Seven Court Street, among others. Uh, Mr. Goldman is on the Zoom tonight um for medical reasons. And he has asked me to come in person to convey a few key points. Uh, relative to the draft city master plan being considered this evening. Actually, you can see city master plan. Mr. Goldman's been around the city for a long time, so he's still using the old. Uh, nomenclature, but. First and foremost, uh, Mr. Goldman, thanks, uh, the planning commission, uh, volunteers, like the many committees who are part of this and the city council for. Um, working really hard on this plan, um, trying to synthesize the wishes of this. Vibrant community into one single document. Um, and thank you again for fulfilling. Your role in the planning process and taking time to hear his concerns. So on the high level, Mr. Goldman applauds the uh recognition in the city plan, city needs to add more housing. We heard. Specific metrics uh a moment ago. That's really critical to ensure the vibrancy and the sustainability of the community over time. The draft contains important provisions designed to create conditions that are more conducive. To uh development in our downtown, in our city, as opposed to the sprawl we have seen approach into the surrounding more rural communities where we've had. Scattered development in the past decades and less development here in Montpelier. To that end, one of the most significant um plan recommendations is for the city. To amend the unified development regulations, also known as the zoning bylaws. To make them procedurally easier to navigate for those who look to help our city meet its housing challenge. And substantively more permissible to the types of development needed to add meaningful housing uh to the city. Mr. Goldman appreciates the fact that the planning uh staff and the planning commission. Have already actually begun the process of revisiting the regulations and uh I am working with him um. And the planning commission to make some written recommendations there. So strongly applaud the recognition that some changes could be made to the bylaws to make um. Things a little easier uh for folks who want to help the city out. Mr. Goldman also wants the council and the community to understand that he and. His partner, um, Doug Zorzy, who I also saw is on here on not joining us in person for. Medical reasons, have been working earnestly for several years to execute a viable plan for the development on Saban's pasture. Achieving success on that parcel of land. Will uh require coordination and cooperation between its owners and the city. And the master plan's inclusion of Saban's pasture in the tax increment financing proposal. Map and in the draft plan is a positive reaffirmation in the city's interest in this coordination. And cooperation. Unfortunately, there have been some stops and starts and fits and um. In the past, so it it is also good that the plan recognizes that. Quote, as the Country Club Road and Saban's pasture projects evolve. New zoning districts will be needed to connect these areas and allow these areas to grow towards each other. Currently, um. Part of the upper Saban's pasture is zoned rural, and that is the most restrictive um zoning that we have in the city. One issue of concern to Mr. Goldman, however, is the relative disparity and emphasis between the growth at Saban's pasture parcel. On the one hand, and at the Country Club Road site, on the other hand. The Country Club Road site is uh mentioned um. No fewer than thirty-two times in the city plan, while Saban's pasture is mentioned only three times. Um, as the council knows, Saban's pasture um is closer to our existing downtown. Contiguous with several existing neighborhoods. And closer to existing utilities than the Country Club Road parcel. So developments on Saban's uh pasture should not be a second-tier priority. And Mr. Goldman is concerned that the disparity and emphasis between the Country Club Road site and Saban's pasture. Could translate into a de-priorities. Pre-prioritization of Saban's pasture by city staff pursuing resources. To unlock the city's housing development potential, such as committing to the extension of sewer. And water infrastructure farther down Berry Street to connect with all of Saban's pasture, including the land owned by Casey Ellison. As originally planned in the twenty eighteen TIF application. So development in Saban's should not be less of a priority than development of Country Club Road when it comes to things like. The um capital improvement planning, which is called out as an implementation strategy. In the uh draft city plan, similarly, uh, in the city's pursuit of community development, block grant funds. Uh, the city plan should encourage more city cooperation with the Saban's pasture owners. When it comes to facilitating new neighborhood development on this key, unique piece of Montpelier's housing puzzle. An additional concern um is about the potentially unintended consequences of the. Language in the city plan relating to the city's green print map. And relatedly, the natural resources inventory maps. These maps are important informational tools to help educate the community about the natural assets present in Montpelier. And the conservation possibilities that exist in the future. Mr. Goldman is concerned, however, that some of these maps, such as the green print map and the interior forest block map. May be misinterpreted by some who will wrongly believe. Or be led to believe that the areas depicted on those maps are already conserved for public use by virtue of their inclusion in the city plan. Or otherwise restricted from being developed. As some community members know, uh, Mr. Goldman owns approximately six hundred acres roughly between Route Two and Terrace Street. Commonly referred to as Crestview and the Jocelyn Farm, and much of that area appears on the green print map and on the interior forest block map. Now, Mr. Goldman gave back permits to develop that area back in the nineties, and he's kept his land open for thirty years. And maintain the property organically as a natural experience for the community. He envisions creating a nature park and working organic. Organic farm there, but the key priority here to understand is. It's one thing to be asked to conserve your land and dedicate it to public use, and it is another thing to be told you must do so. Now, the green print uh map included in the plan. Uh, depicts areas identified for future parkland and trails, and most of those areas, including the area I just spoke about, are privately owned. And that's why it's important to lift up the language in the draft plan, quoting from the green print plan. That recognizes that, quote, voluntary. Voluntary land conservation actions will be determined by the landowner's willingness to participate in identified conservation initiatives. Mr. Goldman believes that the voluntariness of this participation cannot be sufficiently emphasized. Too often in the recent history of Montpelier have certain citizens become entrenched in the belief. That their past recreational use of undeveloped private land is a perpetual entitlement that the city must reg- regulations. Must protect and that citizens can vindicate through the opposition in the zoning process. The da- draft plan must take additional care. Not to foster that perception at the expense of the reality that recreational use of private land. Is voluntary kindness on the part of the owners, and that voluntary kindness is not forever when it's time. To look at other uses of the land, such as helping the city achieve its housing goals. For that reason, it is troubling to see language elsewhere in the Community Service Implementation Plan section. Where the spirit of the green print plan language about voluntary landowner participation. Is abandoned in favor of a regulatory mandate. This appears. In section or on what, what is page one hundred and twenty-two if you're looking at the legacy or two hundred and twenty-one, excuse me. Uh, if you're looking at the archival version, um, and it's it's the implementation strategy for the. Community services, and it's titled amend and continue to administer the unified development regulations. Specifically, you will see uh that it says, quote, regarding parks. The regulations should be amended to require. Private connections to trails where a residential development abuts the trail system identified in the green print. Where a future trail is anticipated in the green print, the new residential development shall, which usually means is required. Reserve space for the future private connection to the city's trail network. Mr. Goldman believes that this type of mandate is working at cross purposes with the spirit of the green print plan. And the more urgent goals in the draft city plan to add substantial housing units to the city's built environment. The mandatory shall language in this section should be replaced with language that encourages but does not require. New development to include trail connectivity where that is feasible. And where the city is willing to assume responsibility for trail maintenance. Trails are not an easy thing to build and maintain, and it's a lot to ask people in this challenging uh ec- economy. To both build housing and build a trail network for the city's purposes. So these kind of mandates that are in the plan do not send a welcoming signal to those private landowners. Who are trying to step up to help the city with the with their goals. So, Mr. Goldman, appreciate your consideration of these comments, and we will look to take some uh opportunities to pro- provide some written suggestions. In between now and the next meeting, but for tonight, thank you very much for um hearing Mr. Goldman's concerns.
Thanks, Anthony, and I would definitely encourage you, if you have specific language for suggestions, to get it to us in writing.
Yeah, and I would just ask if you wouldn't mind if you have the comments that you've made tonight in writing. I appreciate those as well.
Be very happy to submit those on Mr. Goldman's behalf. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, Sandra.
Before I start, um. Uh, Mayor, I heard you say we had five minutes, and then I thought I heard you say three, so. Five, four, okay, I might be able to finish in three. Um. Well, he was speaking for two people. Um, my name is Sandra Bitstum. I live at fourteen Mumus Street. Thank you for letting me speak. My comments tonight are very specific and focused on one sentence. And um, that sentence is the one that was already mentioned tonight. Uh, the sentence, Montpelier has a goal of creating six hundred housing units over the next eight years, comma, most of which would be rental units. Um. I first of all want to applaud the city for doing this in. Challenging work. I also want to point out that the storybook format, which until recently, I think, couldn't really make a PDF out of. Is very difficult for people trying to work with that document. For something like a proposal, uh, if you were doing a development proposal. It would be nice to have. Some kind of mark up at the top where you could link that you could just download the whole PDF. And you may already have that on the site now. But it is incredibly hard. It's almost, um, it's almost manipulative because you can only go through it. In certain ways. It's very hard to see though. It it would be like uh trying to understand the world through GPS, right? Like you can only see the trail that you're going down. You can't look at the rest of the area. Um. Okay, so on this sentence. Uh, I started working on this topic. It's really been important to me for three years. I have dozen, interviewed dozens of people um. Of different levels of income in town and outside of town. About this question of homeownership versus rental. And um, my experience is that uh. Many more people would rather own than rent. Um, and I, when I first saw. Um, and I, when I first saw this sentence, I asked, Mike, where did it come from? What was the methodology? What were the facts behind it? And I did not know that there was a housing study, Washington County Housing Study, but I never got that. So it's hard. I don't know if it's actually based on facts or people's feelings of what they've noticed. Our, um, unhoused population are, it's a, it's a big problem facing Montpelier. Um, but sometimes the true facts are as visible or obvious. And so I think, I, I believe you're doing a housing study soon, which is really important. So I, what I want to suggest is rather than waiting eight years to make this change, I want to suggest that you take out everything after the comma for now. You've already, it's been discussed that you can add things back in over time. I would like to ask that you take that off and just end the sentence, Montpelier has a goal of creating six hundred housing units over the next eight years, period. And then when you have actual facts, I've shared the study and I'm happy to share it in the bathroom, a lot of coffees. Um, my experience from this unofficial survey is that eighty percent of people who would like to, they would like to own. And, and that includes very small houses, uh, starter homes could be a word for that. So I would like the city to make some diligence. Why is this important? The reason is, especially when it's highlighted in red, it is giving the reader the impression that that is in a highlight. It's a very important goal. It's more important than the rest of the information on the page. When you are applying for a grant as a city or when your partners are applying for grants or when a developer is trying to put a, a project through a PUD process that requires review and not just administrative approval, all three of those purposes rely very heavily on the city plan. Montpelier cannot get a growth center until it conforms with the city plan. Montpelier cannot get a TIF unless the TIF project conforms with the city plan. That sentence really pressures people to prioritize rental housing so that they conform with the city plan. If I were a developer here in Montpelier and I saw that sentence, I would say, uh-oh, I better not have a hundred percent homes. I better not, maybe not even have fifty percent homes. My, this unofficial survey, which I, I hope you will be able to do a more professional job than I was able to do. You okay? All right. Um, is that it could be as many as eighty percent of the unanswered needs. I, I have talked to people recently who've moved out of Montpelier. Thank you. These, um, uh, uh, these individual comments, a lot of people have moved out, one moved to Maine because they gave up on Montpelier. Um, so anyways, all I'm saying is, could we please cut that off? And so we don't mislead or go down a path we don't want. Thank you for your time. Yep.
Uh, first of all, thank you for validating what I said. When I see red and the rest of it is kind of, I don't know, part black, part gray, and I see blue underlined, the red just is like, whoa, like, you know, alert, alert, alert. And that's why I brought that up, and I brought it up because of the, I don't believe that most people want to rent. I don't even need a survey to know that, but thank you for doing one. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you very much, Jim. I should say council member.
Jim's fine.
My council member. Thank you very much, folks.
Yes, sir. Hi there. Thank you all. Um, I'm gonna talk about another number just below the six hundred. Um, but first of all, uh, hi, my name is Tim Senate. I'm a resident of District One and the most recent member of the Planning Commission, uh, having joined this past fall. Uh, I urge City Council to adopt the new city plan. The plan is a very thorough document that paints an accurate picture of Montpelier's history, present day, and goals for the future. Thinking about our future, the most exciting elements of the plan are the proposals for housing uh, at the Country Club Road Site and infill throughout the city. Uh, I'll add Saban's Pasture to that as well because that's also exciting to me. Uh, the city plan sets a, a goal of a minimum of fifteen hundred housing units in the next twenty years. This aspiration is both impressive and necessary and represents a Montpelier city that I want to be a part of. Adopting the new city plan sets us on a path towards achieving our housing needs and ambitions, very simply. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you for, uh, allowing folks to speak tonight about this. My name is, um, John Mayfield. Uh, I have, uh, and I wrote this down so I don't babble and ramble off into the distance, so. Um, I have owned Julio's for the past twenty years, uh, and I have been a District One resident of Montpelier for the past three years. Uh, I believe Montpelier is a really cool town, vibrant, great place to live, and has been overall a great place to do business for a long time. But succeeding in business for the small shops and restaurants in our historic downtown has become more and more difficult. State workers no longer fill our streets for shopping errands or lunch every Monday through Friday. They no longer gather in significant numbers after work, generating an early dinner rush, and I don't believe that they're coming back. Online shopping and increased competition from surrounding towns with large scale and small scale shopping and dining operations provide potential customers' choices and at times can make Montpelier less attractive. As a result, many downtown businesses are struggling. The city's focus on increasing housing opportunities is critically important, and I support it wholeheartedly. But there has to be additional efforts to put, as the hospitality industry puts it, heads in beds. Here's my honest assessment. Even if Montpelier can increase housing stock by twenty-five percent and increase our population by twenty-five percent from eight thousand to ten thousand, there would still not be enough people on a daily basis to create the critical mass needed to support the numerous small businesses that make Montpelier's downtown the amazing place it is and create stability in the market. There is only one way from my perspective to keep Montpelier a successful small business downtown into the future without a lot of turnover, without businesses going in and out, and without a lot of empty shops. We need increased tourist visits. We're a downtown designed to make travelers ecstatic. Two thousand twenty-four was an amazing year for most businesses in downtown. Example, there was little snow and mild temperatures during the twenty-three, twenty-four winter season, also during the twenty-two, twenty-three season. Unfortunate for the ski towns, but wonderful for Montpelier with winter business up, and I can only speak for myself, but over twenty percent from previous years in the past those two years, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, as skiers left Stow and Sugar Bush to visit Montpelier. Combined with the effect of the eclipse and the community support from all over New England and Canada after the twenty-twenty-three floods, Julio's had its very best year ever in twenty-twenty-four. I will tell you that this winter has been the opposite. Cold, dreary, rainy, extended for months. Um, I am here tonight to ask you to revisit the economic development portion of the city plan and make the new hotel objective in the city plan an extremely high priority. If you believe in the small town shopping and dining feel of Montpelier, we need the development of one or two sixty to eighty-room hotels in our historic downtown or walking distance of downtown. The study that was done a number of years ago, I'll throw it, remember when they had the hotel that we, everybody was working on and most people were happy about? Um, going in, it was going to be worth thirty thousand meals to downtown. That's a huge number for restaurants in our downtown. If you want to increase city funds for the grand list as well as some increase in sales tax, meals and rooms, and liquor tax revenues, and allow businesses to afford the increasing property taxes frequently passed on to commercial renters, um, without a corresponding increase in services, schools, and other areas, we need the development of hotels. According to the National Restaurant Association and the American Hotel and Motel Association, every tourist traveler spends an average of three hundred dollars per day in the local community when vacationing. It includes lodging and other things. Um, we almost accomplished this a few years ago before the pandemic, and if the hotel plan had happened, I believe Montpelier City and its businesses would be in a very different economic environment right now. With the federal building and the large parking lot behind it as a development option, it seems a good time to include hotel development as a higher priority goal in the city plan. It's now listed as moderately important. I don't think that's high enough on the scale, at least from my perspective. There is more than one way to put heads in beds when supporting local downtown merchants and increasing local revenues for the city without dramatic increases in native services, while allowing us to expose folks to America's smallest and most amazing state capital. Please consider making new hotel development a much higher priority item going forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I will point out that if, uh, if the proposed, uh, hotel and parking garage had been developed, that new hotel would have been, uh, safe from the flood that, uh, that we were hit with in, in two thousand twenty-three.
I think it is possible with designs. First of all, people comment, I've heard comments that, you know, well, it's got to fit into downtown. These folks know how to do that. It can fit into downtown, and they can be designed in a resilient fashion and can be done in a way that only add to the character of downtown. I'm gonna share one brief story if I have a moment, if that's okay. After the two thousand eleven floods, um, two of them, I blew up my back really bad and was three months in. Um, and I started to feel better, and I said to my, um, my wife, I said, let's go somewhere, and we had a bunch of points with Marriott. And we had looking around, and we didn't want to go to a beach or anything, but we looked at Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and that was about the time that the entire Portwalk development was being done there. And you had a Hilton going in, and you had a Marriott Residence in and a few other things going in, and we had points, so we went there. And we proceeded to go back nine times across the next three years. Now, Portsmouth does have water, but we've got the shopping, we've got the cute shops, we've got a great place for romantic weekend, for family weekend. People, as they get older, don't want to just spend time in a ski lodge. They'll stay in Montpelier and go out. I, I think that there's great opportunity, and it would be really good for Montpelier, and it's not going to dramatically increase services, required services by the city, and is going to provide funds for sex things, so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Have any questions? Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anybody else? Mr. Weiss.
I've, uh, assimilated what you told me and didn't call you doctor.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Thomas Weiss, resident of District Two, and I'll speak to you this evening about the lack of the draft plans, I'm sorry, the lack about the draft plan's lack of information required by statute for a city plan. These omissions are sufficient to return the draft plan to the Planning Commission for revisions. Uh, what I did was I compared the statutory requirements for the contents of a city plan against what is actually in the city plan. And these are some of the omissions that I found. The city plan appears to contain no statement of objectives, policies, and programs of the municipality to guide the future growth and development of land, public services, and facilities, and to protect the environment. I do not consider the three principles in the landing page to be a statement of objectives, nor did I find any statement of how the scattered mention of existing policies shows how they guide and protect as required by the statute. The land use plan portion fails to set forth the appropriate timing or sequence of land development activities in relation to the provision of necessary community facilities and services. The land use plan portion also fails to provide for the new for, for the new growth center, the land use plan fails to provide an explanation of how the designation would further the plan's goals and the goals of the, uh, goal section of, of the the chapter, uh, that, that covers regional and municipal planning. And it fails to explain how the area meets the requirements for the type of designation to be sought. And the plan also fails to explain why the existing growth center is inadequate because existing growth centers are designed to handle at least a hundred and fifty percent of housing requirements, a hundred percent of commercial and requirements, and only and and growth centers are intended to capture the majority of, uh, the new housing and the new commercial doesn't require them to capture all of it. So I, I think the the plan needs to provide additional information on that. The land use plan fails to indicate plans for land development in forest box and habitat connectors to minimize forest fragmentation and promoting the health viability and ecological function of forests. The utility and facility portion of the plan fails to address how the population from the planned six hundred new housing units in the next eight years will affect the utilities and the facilities. That portion of the plan also fails to provide recommendations to meet future needs for community facilities and services with indications of priority of need, costs, and method of financing. There appears to be no statement of policies on the preservation of rare and irreplaceable natural areas, scenic and historic features, and resources. There appears to be no recommended program for the inter implementation of the objectives of the development plan. The city plan has lots of goals and strategies. It has no clear statement as to what the objectives of the plan are. And each chapter has what is labeled an implementation plan, the playbook. And those pages have no timelines, no indication of order in which actions need to be taken. So I do not consider the implementation plans to meet the statutory requirement. The flood resilience plan fails to identify the locations of the fluvial erosion hazard areas. The draft city plan fails to be built on solid information and projections. The plan does not appear to have been based on inventory studies and analyses of current trends. It does not appear to have discussed the characteristic, I'm sorry, the probable social and economic consequences of the proposed plan. The plan does not provide population characteristics and distribution, including income and employment. It does not appear to document the municipality, I'm sorry, existing and projected housing needs by amount, type, and location for all economic groups within the municipality and region. And it does not appear to provide existing and estimated patterns and rates of growth in the various land use class- classifications and desired patterns and rates of growth in terms of the community's ability to finance and provide public facilities and services. These comments are an overview of the omissions from the draft city plan. I have noted other items within the city plan, too numerous to mention here within my allotted time, and I recommend that you return the draft plan to the Planning Commission for revisions, and thank you for the opportunity to provide these comments. I do have a response to Jim's comment and Sandy's later follow-up. Uh, a couple paragraphs above that six hundred units mostly rental is a statement, blue paragraph. This city plan values both rental and owner-occupied housing equally. And those two statements are in internal conflict uh, that needs to be resolved, and there are other internal conflicts. Uh, I do plan to get more detailed comments on the contents of the plan itself, not what, just what the plan is omitting, but what is in the plan, uh, that I would like to comment on. But of course, I don't have time now since I'm probably two minutes over my five minutes now.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me continue until I finish.
And if you could get, uh, those comments to us in writing, that'd be very helpful.
Right.
Thanks. Anybody else in the room? Steve.
Good evening, Steve Whitaker. Um, I'm not as well organized as Anthony Arapino, uh, but I have some notes that will shed some light on this. Uh part of it is you need to consider the relationship between the city plan twenty twenty five, the Whitenburg so-called actionable plan and the Maple Plan. Uh I believe what you're watching unfold, however however sausage-like it looks, is attempts to cut corners on the city plan in order to get a growth center application completed by the end of September. Uh I'm confident we're not going to make that goal and we should just recognize that and take a step back and take a deep breath and go back to work as others have recommended on getting a proper city plan done. This city plan draft is a lot of fluff, a lot of aspirations, very little strategy, very little sequencing, very little budgeting, uh very little accountability. Uh the voters are demanding that we cut taxes and that we cut administrative staff and to have pinned every task here on individuals uh in effect sets us up for failure because we don't have contingency plans around how we're going to reallocate the tasks to get the city plan implemented and cut staff when necessary. Uh so there's also the annual strategic plan which y'all are taking up at a at other meetings. I'm I'm not going to go, that's a very short term. I suggest you might consider doing a annual revision to maybe a three-year strategic plan. It's too chaotic to develop a strategic plan from scratch annually, uh because many things take more than a year to implement. So what I think you're seeing is not not a Country Club Road chapter in this draft plan. There's a couple of paragraphs, the most obviously untrue one is the uh phrase that the city has completed the planning phase with regard to Country Club Road. That is so false, it's just laughable. The the city has not completed the planning planning phase. Whitenburg described a phase two planning process. Your subcommittee certainly didn't complete the planning. You know, you all you did is massage a concept. There's still a planning phase that needs to happen and it needs to have the public involved. The law requires the public to be involved in a city plan. And this is almost a cynical attempt to get you to adopt the actionable plan after you've substituted a new concept plan and substituted a new set of priorities eliminating the phase two and then incorporate that as if it fills the gap in the city plan for Country Club Road. But yet it lacked the entire public participation of a phase two planning process that's required by law. So this is, this is a dysfunction in our planning, uh and it doesn't attract developers. Uh but as I've stated before, and I will, I think it's most concise to just share it with you, uh my comments to the Planning Commission at their last meeting. Sorry about that. I'm gonna jump to another topic because I can't find that right now. Uh the process, the web-based plan disenfranchises a whole lot of people who are not computer literate. Uh even a a computer literate architect tells you, it's like trying to navigate, understand the world by following a GPS. It it doesn't work. Uh I watched them, I sat through a plenty of planning commissions, watched them struggle with it. You know, even to the very last adoption meeting, they couldn't get the plan to behave the way they want it to in a web-based format. And when you print it out, the uh formatted eleven by seventeen sheets are too small to read, uh as you'll see if you look in the binder. The 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 point size is just ludicrous. So I believe that it was a mistake to go all web uh before we've really got our head around, maybe after we've really perfected this plan and evolved it to another level and gotten a lot more participation involved. I've been to many of these planning commission meetings and nobody shows up or one or two people show up. And then there's the discussion of, well, we've engaged with all the the subcommittees. Well, the homelessness task force, not the uh utilities and facilities uh restrooms committee. Uh Terry, did did the planning commission meet with the restrooms committee uh for to address that? There's basic needs in town, emergency homeless services, condition of our sidewalks I've mentioned earlier, maintenance. We we have these, we spent a quarter million dollars on these wayfinding signs to help tourists. The one right in front of Skinny Pancake, three or four of the businesses are no longer there that that it points to, the visitor center, the, you know. And it there's even a photo of the Susan Calza Gallery. It's not there anymore and and it's featured in our draft plan that isn't even adopted yet. So there's a maintenance problem here and we keep proposing to build more before we figure out how to maintain what we've got in the way of sidewalks and curbs and storm drains. You know, we're we're not going to have an unlimited growing budget to keep paying for our expansion uh with increased taxes, increased water and sewer fees. So we need to restructure our economic calculus and our size of government and our efficiency of government. It shouldn't take multiple meetings or weeks or months to get, you know, the proper date corresponding to the day of the week on an agenda or the phone in number for a, you know, tho- those are just compliance with law. So public participation was next to nil in this process. Uh Peter, Peter Kelman, myself, uh Kim Chaney, former Attorney General, former Chair of the Public Safety Authority, we came in and explained regional dispatch and how that needs to be a part of uh sharing the costs equitably and quit hanging on to our monopoly service that's unsupervised, unregulated and unaccountable. And yet Mike Miller served up a softball memo to the police chief and the police chief comes back and says, we like it the way it is. And Tim Senate says, we're just going to take the word of our staff. So what's the point of coming in, being expert on a topic and coming in and arguing for why we need to put a discussion of regional dispatch into the plan if that's the way it's going to be crafted? Sorry to ex- expose the sausage, but that's just really what's going on here. This is a a failure of a plan. It was written by Mike and it was rubber stamped by a commission that's only half engaged. So
Steve, if you have also additional comments in writing or you find find the comments you sent to the planning commission, we'd certainly be happy to take those too.
Uh in the sense of emergency for planning, there's been discussion of putting enhancing wireless around town and I would argue especially with backup power, extended power and fiber connected so that it would it stay online during a outage. We had a city hall wifi, but it was plugged in in the basement and it was the first to go. So there's no reason we shouldn't attract tourists by having wifi all over town, but it needs to be designed to weather a flood and provide a first accessibility to folks uh during an emergency. The navigation I've suggested prior about as we rebuild sidewalks, we're gonna have to rebuild a whole lot of sidewalk with this big dig. Uh a navigation system for site impaired. We have a town where people are mostly trained to honor the sidewalks. If we put, we we this could be a destination for tourists who are sight impaired and mobility impaired if we honored the people who already live here who are sight impaired and mobility impaired and made it safe to walk on our sidewalks. Just look at the entrance to city hall and and uh but no, I don't have a prepared speech and I'm not that confident that uh but one, a question you have to also answer, are we gonna honor prime ag soils? Food resiliency is given tacit uh token attention in here. Food resiliency, if real disasters happen is important. We need to think carefully of whether we're gonna build around the edges of those clearings at Country Club Road and maintain some of those prime ag soils. We've also got toxicity we haven't addressed in the uh it's brownfield, there's heavy metals and other chemicals on the on the from the golf course. That's I could be more organized if you schedule, I guess for the next hearing, I I'll have some of this boiled down. I printed a lot of it today, so.
Yeah, we will have at least one additional public hearing and
In closing, I would second the recommendations that you send this back to the planning commission. Give up on the growth center for this year. Uh and and get a real plan done right and probably in a document and address these many errors and omissions that you've heard about tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who wants to be heard? I'm not seeing anybody who hasn't been heard. I'm not anyone online. I don't want to anyone who wants to be heard to Okay, uh Peter Kelman.
Peter Kelman, uh Mountain View Street. Um I've spent more hours and days that I can count uh reading various drafts as plans starting in twenty eighteen when I was on the housing task force. Um I'll just say very simply, I've written to planning commission detailed comments, I've written to Mike detailed comments, I've copied most of the city council on many of these, but not all of these. Um I don't want to go into all the things that are wrong. You've heard a lot of them from a number of people. Um but I think you have a choice here. If you think that it is realistic and necessary to get a uh designation and TIF that includes Country Club Road, then I think you should hold your noses and pass this along and cross your fingers and hope that it gets approved. If you don't think that that's a likelihood, then I think you should start the process over. You should start it over in much the same way as the twenty ten, uh which was really done in two thousand and eight, I believe, which really engaged the public, which really engaged the committees. I don't care what Mike says about public engagement. The fact that there are so few people here today, except a handful, the fact that there've only been a handful of people who showed up for any of the public engagement uh um sessions that they ran. This has not been been, this has not engaged the public. Now, you could, you can say, as Bill always says, whenever I talk about public engagement, well, most people don't care. No, that's not true. But most people don't know how to become engaged. You, if you want to do this the the right way, first of all, in actually engage the committees. Actually engage them. Actually have you city council members in do sessions the way some of you have started to do with your constituents. And and get some professional help on how to frame the questions. And the basic question I think that we need to ask, the basic question, not the only question, is what do we want Montpelier to look like twenty years from now or fifteen years from now? Do we want to have a population of sixteen thousand? I think Jim asked that question a couple of meetings ago. Well, if so, what would it look like? What would traffic look like? What would schools look like? What would public transportation look like? What would sidewalks look like? And by the way, I don't mean this to be rhetorical. I personally think it would be great to have a town of sixteen thousand, but not a town of sixteen thousand that it's the town that we look at and see now. It would, it's going to look completely different. Get people to really envision what a town would look like. I thought the comments that John Mayfield made about the about the hotel were right on. And I think it's actually a tragedy that the that that the idea for a parking garage and 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 a hotel were were trammelled. And I think it was because the public wasn't engaged. People didn't know what they were voting for. Uh uh um uh uh I mean, my wife and I decided to split. I I was for, she was against. Neither of us really understood what was really at stake. We really need to talk about with a lot of people, what is at stake. I thought that the public engagement process on Country Club Road that was done by Whitenburg was excellent. Now, did it draw eight thousand people? No, but it drew hundreds of people. That's more than, that's more than this whole process is done. So you guys need to decide. You can be cynical, uh no, sorry. You guys need to decide. Do you think there's a prayer of getting approval for this process, for this this plan? And if so, just send it on. Don't spend a whole lot more time on it. There's too many things wrong with it. Or should you start over? If we start over, it's got to be done in a completely different way. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Are there any other comments from the public? Peter, yours is the only hand I'm we're seeing that you're, you've lowered it. I'll remind all the members of the public that there's another, there will be at least one more opportunity to be heard next week if the if you have some thoughts about this. Um but seeing no other Yes, you can take another minute.
And and again, the context here is that the chapter, the country club chapter is missing and it's trying to be, you know, hoodwinked in later as the actionable plan with substitutions. And that is left out of the entire public process that is already deficient. I think these errors and omissions on behalf of the planning commission, but specifically Country Club Road. Now we've got a draft delivered to the council that says the planning process is complete. And we're gonna, we should skip phase two and adopt the actionable plan. So what's left to adopt in the Whitenburg plan, if you ignore the advice to do phase two, enter process of planning and we're throwing out their concept and substituting in another. It's absurd to be recommending adoption of that because it's no longer Whitenburg's plan that we paid for. Your subsidy, and it's, I think it's deceptive. You've all, I've done a deep analysis of what it's going to take to require to get a growth center application approved and we are nowhere close, especially with the capital budget and capital program. Those are tasks of the planning commission and we have never had a five-year capital program which includes every sidewalk, road, water, sewer, pipe, priced out, estimated, prioritized, identified sources of funds for each of those things, including civic bus shelters, et cetera. Every bit of that has to be in a five-year capital plan to qualify for a growth center. And we've never had that. And we got the unique circumstances. This is Country Club Road adjacent, a buddy? Because when Sabans was added to the growth center, it was through the old rules which have since been revoked. They they realized that we didn't have the proper paperwork or application to get Sabans in. And the application to put a piece of Sabans in only wanted the southwest corner and it said, at all costs, protect the upper highlands. Now we were ignoring all that. We're saying the whole thing's in, it had to be in, the whole parcel had to be in to get the tip. But now we're saying we're gonna build a a road in from through the highlands, the the protected view up in order to get to Country Club Road? I don't think that's gonna fly with the the capital, the the city state board. And frankly, I've also said this, the combination of needs, we've got homeless shelter, we've got flood resiliency, we've got Turtle Island, we've got Frisbee golf, we've got pickleball, we've got the rec department, we've got uh potentially workforce training for the unhoused, that if they were allowed to camp up there because it's no longer a sensitive area. We've got a lot of things that need to be, you can't rely on RFP for, RFPs for for-profit developers to put that We've got a lot of things that need to be, you can't rely on RFP for, RFPs for for-profit developers to put that kind of master plan together. To balance those things, what sense of privacy is anyone who buys a lot or buys a tiny home up there going to have? If the whole thing is this ambiguous rec area? Somebody told me that they want, they want a place to walk their dog off leash, you know? That's okay, but Hubbard Park doesn't work, the, the rules, you know, the. But my point is that. Without a master plan. We're, we're not going to achieve something that's good for all of Montpelier. We're going to. Probably provide an ungated community for very rich people, but. Our needs right now are agriculture, the tree farm for the parks department. A place for the homeless to live dignified and have hygiene, right? This, this idea, the homeless chapter in this plan is a joke because it says, oh, we're going to just rely on partners and pretend they're doing it, even though two-thirds of the people don't fit into the good Sam Rubrik. You know, and we're just going to complain about them on our streets, right? So the city has to own this issue and instead we tend to tear down every shelter, Gerton Shelter, Bus Shelter. Uh, take out the concrete benches and. Interestingly, leave the council out of all those decisions, so there's no political repercussions. The, all those things happened without the council ever weighing in and saying, no, we should leave. Although with the exception of Gerton. Y'all decided to take Gert Park away. But. My point is, without a master plan, I'm going to oppose the growth center and the TIF district, and I believe I'll prevail. Because. A master plan is the only way that we're going to get what's good for all of Montpelier instead of a few. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the room or online? Who would like to be heard? Pause for a moment. All right, at this point, we will close. The public hearing. Um. Do council members want to? Talk about this at all now, or would you have to wait till next time? Jim, you've got your hand up?
Um. Yeah. I'm looking at the tables that I'm sitting at here. And I'm the only one that went through the 2010. Um. It was like day and night. From what this is. I mean, we held a thing at National Life that was packed. In their cafe. Pat, we had to have a number of people with boards taking the comments. They were flying like, you know, we were almost like, oh, my God, they're just going to take three years to go through all these comments, but. My point was. This. It was so night and day, it just seemed like it was well set up. It was heavily attended. And it just was so different than this, and I know none of you went through that, but I did.
I did.
Okay, but you weren't on the board then.
True.
Um, I was on the council then and. It just, I was, I went through also the one in 2005 that kind of reminded me of this. And that's why we did the one after that, because nobody was happy with 2005. And everybody was happy. 2010 was like. The, the template that how things should be done, in my opinion, and. This wasn't it. That's all I got to say.
Thanks, Jim. Anybody else?
You know, I, I, I've heard Adrian say before, I've got a ton of questions and, and to be honest, I would rather like, I would like to hear some questions. Do you have time to reflect for the next week? You know, I just think if people have like pressing questions, I mean, I will just say like, I really appreciate all the comments that came tonight. I was particularly struck with the economic development component around the hotel. Like, I just think, I mean. For those of us that have gone, I mean, we don't need to even go to the meetings to know this, like that the businesses are struggling. Right? And that a hotel. Uh, it's just really important in our downtown. So anyway, that's just like a minor thing, but I, it really, I have to say, it's really compelling to me. I would love to hear from other people, thoughts on the plan, just to like, so we can all kind of start to reflect on it. Over the coming week.
Adrian, the floor is yours. Yes.
Sure. Um, okay, so. I guess let me just have a whole bunch of questions.
Hold on a minute, let me, let me pause for a moment. We generally take a break at eight thirty. Maybe we should do that now and come back at eight thirty.
Okay.
Thank you. And we're just one minute over a ten-minute break, so excellent. So before we start, before we broke. We turn the floor over to Adrian for, for a list of questions, and if you also have them in writing, that would be perfect, but. All right.
You can't, I'm sure you cannot read my in writing, so I will write them up and. Um, so I'll start off with. This is like a ton of work, so thank you, um, planning department and the planning commission and. Everyone who has taken the time to provide input and review and edit and. I know there's some folks in our community that have spent years reviewing and editing and their time because they. Um, one, they like doing it and two, it, this is really important. This is, I feel like this is a very important process for our community. It's an important document for our community, and so I, I want to make sure that we get this right. And. You know, just, I have very high-level comments today, not being line by line, but just as a structure. Um, this is what I do for a living. Um, I work, I build strategic plans, um, not for cities, but for organizations. And I, one of my goals when I work with organizations is to not have them on the shelf, right? That is like the ultimate, like gold star is to build a plan and not have it sit on a shelf. And so that is what I hope we can get to and that this is a manageable plan, this is something that is actionable. And that we can measure, right? So how, like what Palin asked earlier, how do we know? We're being successful? How do we know when we fail? Which is also a very important part of planning because we're not going to accomplish. Everything a hundred percent in this plan. So I think my first question is. You know, it's really the web-based structure and. It really concerns me in terms of like updating the website. Um. You know, updating the, the maps. And like, do the maps have to be included in the city plan? Because. It's ArchGIS, like I feel like that can be a total separate, like. Part of our website that's not even included on the city plan because just updating that, like having the data connected to it, just seems really complicated. Um. Like my overall goal for the city plan is to make this easy. And right now. Like this is so complicated, my head wants to float a little bit in terms of like tracking. The aspirations, the goals, the strategies, everything that's online, like I can't, I can't understand it and I'm. A highly educated master's degree, you know, person that does it for a living. So that's a huge concern for me and the structure of this plan, how it is online, how we have all these maps and ArchGIS, how we're going to keep it updated. Um, who's going to update it? Do we have the capacity to update it? Like. Like huge concerns in terms of like making the update on a website. And having this. I don't even know, like I think I don't have the whole plan printed out here. I think it was like two hundred pages on eleven by seventeen, like. Like, how are we going to keep, how are we going to maintain this plan? Like, it's a huge concern for me. Um. And I think it's overwhelming. And when you, what, what I referenced, we don't want this plan to sit on the shelf. I feel like that's what's going to happen, even though that's not what we want to happen because it's just a bear. It's too big. And so. And so, that's a concern and. However, if you want to answer the question about who is going to maintain this website, I see it's created for the city of Montpelier by SE group, but it's built by Arch GIS hub. So what does that mean? Like, who are these people and are they going to update it or is the city staff going to update it?
So I can start with that question, that is, um, so, um, the program that is built in is the. Um, Esri ArcGIS story, story map. So that is the program that this is built in. And, uh, it is a standard. Um, company standard GIS geographic information systems, everybody uses this. And the reason we selected this as the product is because the city already owns it, all of our utilities, all of our. Um, all of our roads, all of that infrastructure is all mapped out in GIS in these data layers and so. Unlike other platforms that we could have chosen, um, you know, with the technology and the way it shifts and changes over time, uh. You could pick a company that could be gone in three years, uh, Esri ArcGIS is not going anywhere, they are the, they are the standard. Of this, um, this niche. Um, regarding who would update it, um, there are a lot of people, including, uh, Nick in my office, he's got a. Um, a degree in GIS. Uh, Zach Logit also does a lot of this and basically a lot of the engineers in the engineering department also do it, but. The plan itself isn't, uh, can only be updated by city council, so this isn't something that's going to have an annual or something, I mean, you can update it as. Annually if you want, but we don't have to keep going back every couple of weeks and months and maintain the city plan. It is going to be a static document until the next time that you change it. Um, I think at the last, uh, meeting or maybe two meetings ago, it was late, I'm sure everyone was tired, um. Uh, but one of the points of, of kind of using this software. Um, is that I think it's, it's got a lot more power and we could set things up to have dashboards and have ways of tracking it. We took the most legally conservative approach for this first adoption. That said, we're the first people in the state to do this, it's been done around the country. Um, but we're the first in Vermont to kind of go, go out and have a city plan that's uses. Um, a web based format for the, for the product. And we had it reviewed by our attorneys, everybody is, is fine with using the Esri product, um, so. Uh, but what we, where we had questions was, all right, what if we had certain dynamic aspects? Could we make the plan in such a way that it's static on top, so you've got a single page that's static, there's a line and then you could have a dashboard. You know, what could we do that could still meet state law, but give us the ability to start tracking, let's have, let's have a section underneath, so the. The city plan goes down seven eighths of the page and the last eighth is benchmarks. And performance standards over time, and that can change. We have opportunities, what I'm trying to say is we've got opportunities to use this product and do things differently going forward, but for this first plan, it was just the basic. Nuts and bolts of, it's got to be static, it's got to be here, we have the ability to fix things and make things, Nick is really good, um. Uh, Tim, the gentleman that was here, um, giving input, he's also a GIS person who's on the planning commission, I mean, there, so there are people in the community who know how to do this, we. It's not a huge expense, SE group was a group that helped us build this. So that's who SE group is, they helped us build the product, um, they were the consultant that we spent money on.
Thanks, Mike. And I'll just tell people, yeah, I, I asked Mike to be, there are some questions that are really like thought questions, other questions that if Mike has the information that he can give us right now. We should, we should have to do that, so.
Mike, could we just briefly, tell us what the legal requirement is that you're talking about for the static version versus the dynamic stuff, I mean, what? I mean, is it possible to do it in twenty dashboards or less?
It's, it's, there's not a specific. Phrase or piece in statute that says that, it's just. The city plan gets proposed and adopted, and so there's a certain expectation that that. Is, you know, but you could, I could bring in a couple of attorneys that might disagree and say, oh, no, no, you can still have it be dynamic, but. We were trying to be as conservative as possible and that's what our attorneys recommended was, don't have dynamic elements built into your city plan. Stick with the, um, as static a plane as you can, the maps are static and don't change.
All, all the goals are stick, they're, they are going to be the way they are and not changeable until.
Until you change.
But the story map allows for dynamic elements.
Uh, we, so we, what we've called it is it's interactive at this point, but it's not dynamic.
But does the, does the software currently allow that to happen?
Oh, we could, absolutely, absolutely, that stop, that software, you could look at other places that would.
Okay.
As, uh, new information came out, it would automatically update to the next. You know.
Thank you.
Okay, keep going.
The other piece of this is, you know, for, you know, a city plan. And I reviewed a, a couple, I went through that, um, I can't remember the website, but I looked at all the other city plans and. You know, a lot of them had, you know, measurable goals and we talked about adding benchmarks at some point, um. But even like looking through here, like the goals. You know, I think, I mean, I'm not looking at this for content per se yet, I'm just looking at this as a structure. But like the strategies, it, I mean, we have a lot of strategies and it. You know, when I read through here, it's, it looks like the work that we're already doing. And we taught, you said that earlier, it's like you wanted a, one of the strategies for building this new city plan is to capture what we're doing. But is that the right strategy? Like, I don't know if you all debated that, but when I think of a city plan and I looked at other city plans, it's more of like the vision, like where do we want to go? Like, what do we want to be in fifteen years? Not like, what are we currently doing? It's a different way of, of thinking about it, like. You said earlier, you all, you know, had these conversations, but I'm concerned that we're not being as aspirational or as visionary as we should be when we're. Really looking at, like, all these strategies are continue, amend, update, um, you know, you're using these verbs of what we're already doing rather than. Really taking the time. Kind of what Jim was saying back in twenty ten, like having those story words, having the community participation, like I would love for that to happen and take the time to. You know, set a goal of, do we want thirty percent of Montpelier residents aged five to a hundred plus? Participate in this plan because we need to get our youth involved, right? The youth is our future. Um, and how do we get them involved? How do we bring this to the schools? How do we bring this to the churches? How do we bring, how do we do a? You know, a road tour of Montpelier with the city plan, I just don't think we've done that. And I don't think we've captured any aspirational visionary goals. What we're doing is capturing the strategies of what we're currently doing. And potentially benchmarking that, which we should do anyway, but is this the right place in the city plan to have these activities? I, I would say no, but I think that's up for debate and argument on, on how others think about this. So that's, I think like fundamentally, I'm not super psyched about this.
Okay.
I think I'm going to stop there.
Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, no, not exactly, I mean, I, I, I am, uh, plowing through it, I mean, it's, it's a, um, massive document. Quite, quite a piece of work, I'm not surprised you've been working on it for seven years, uh. I mean, it reminds me of, you know, a giant thesis, um. Or, or very complicated, uh, Journal by Construction article, you know, how to, um. And I, and I have, I have some comments, but, uh, I haven't organized them really in preparation for this meeting and my plan was to kind of write them up and send them out. To people and to you, you, you're well acquainted with my emails, um. And then hopefully we could, you know, we could then discuss them, um, you know, at the next meeting, but. I, I did find it tricky to deal with the format, you know, this is an odd way to. It was, it was just a little bit, little bit tricky, I, you know, I, I started labeling things like with letters because I, I wanted to refer to a particular. And, you know, a particular strategy or, and there was, there was no way that, there was nothing to say, that's the one I want without reading the caption, so. Some simple things like that might make it easier to, easier to use, um, I also understand the. Tension between a web based. Version and it's, you know, a static version, I mean, the archive is a couple of hundred pages. You either have to bind that, I mean, who's going to print that out? That's, you know, half a ream of paper, um, so access is. Is, is difficult and, um. I'm not surprised that more people would access it online, I, I think we do have to try and figure out how people who. Can't or won't access it online, you know, can get access to it, I'm not sure what the solution is there, but, um. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a first attempt at it and, uh, I, I think it's probably on the right track, we just have to work at it, make sure. We monitor and, and see what we can improve and get some feedback from the public, uh, once it's been out there.
Thank you.
I'll prepare something.
Thanks, thinking about what you were saying, Adrian, I, I think that what we see here are. Some of both things, for instance, we have create a river's edge master plan. That is like a vision of something we could be doing, conduct a survey of existing dams, that's something we could and should be doing, but on the other hand. Under resilience, we have continued to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Obviously. We need to do that, right? The fact that it's in the, the fact that we're doing it already doesn't mean that it's not something that we should have in our plan, and so I think that. There's, there's a mix of, uh, of different things, there's something about continuing, continue to, uh, enforce the, uh, the housing code, obviously. We need to continue doing that.
And. I'm sorry, I didn't, uh.
No.
But I had thoughts along the similar lines of, um. I, I mean, this is maybe very simplistic, but like just thinking about, well, first of all, I just want to say in general, I, I also want to just thank all the people that put all the time into this plan. And it's an incredible undertaking, it's, you know, not perfect, nothing is. Uh, I will have say that in a, you know, previous time in my life, part of my job was reading like. Comprehensive economic development strategy documents, and in a lot of ways, this is actually like much better than many of them I read, including like the one from the state. So I, you know, whatever, I, there's, there's the things, but I, I really appreciate the work that went into it. I understand the concerns about access, I think those are things that maybe we could try and find ways to mitigate. That, I also think, you know, I'm thinking about Adrian, when you're talking about like, we got to get kids involved, like my son is not picking up. A four hundred page document, right? He might look at something like this on a phone, you know, but anyway. Subs, more substantively, just in terms of the formatting, there is a lot of the continue stuff and, uh, but as Jack, as you're saying. Anything that's new won't make sense without it being in the context of what we're already doing. Right? Like the stuff that is new. Is informed by what we do now, and so I think actually having them together is important. I do think though, I wonder, Mike, I don't know if this is too complicated or too hard, but it's like the continues are scattered all over the place. Right? It's like we're do this, continue, we'll do this, we'll continue, what if we just like had different color hatching on this document that like. Here's all the, you know, sixty percent of these are things that we're already doing right now and are all grouped together. Followed by the forty percent of things that are new, um, that, you know, and, and what you're talking about Sal of like the. The logical order in which the strategies are listed, to me, that makes more sense, if I get an overview of. This is what we're doing right now for strategies in the area of land use, here's four new strategies that we're putting in place. And I can tell that they're different, they're grouped differently, it makes it, I think, a little bit more intelligible.
Um, Mike, one of the questions that, uh, that. I think about as we're talking about this plan, it's come up, uh, a couple of times, which is. People saying, talking about how hard or easy it is to use this plan and. Aside from. Us as policy makers using the plan as a way to figure out. Where our zoning bylaw should go and, and other, uh, city decisions should go. How else do people use something like a city plan?
I mean, it's certainly going to be used in the permit process if it gets into act fifty and those types of, um. Uh, regulatory systems, so that certainly comes into play, uh, it, city plans can be used. You know, as minimalistic as we're just doing it, so we've got enough to check all the boxes so we can qualify to be able to do something else, we don't do the plan to use it, it just. You know, to, to, you know, all the way out to. Something that's really meant to be a communication tool and we, the way we envisioned the story maps and the storyboards was that that was intended to be the communication tool to the public, the more interactive. Communication, um, if the public is interested in knowing something. And, uh, may, maybe getting a little bit, this, this goes less to the development of the plan, which I know some of you are talking about, maybe we needed a different process for the development of the plan. But once the plan's in place, um, the other thing I had mentioned late at night was that, um. One of the biggest, uh, opportunities this, this format provides is the ability to add videos. And that is what has made a difference in a number of plans around the country that have been award winning plans around the country is that. You have this and at the top, you've got a video. You get it professionally produced, you don't have me doing it, you've got the professional produced video that will go through and explain to you in five minutes. What is our housing plan? What are the issues? What's the plan? It's graphic and, you know, you can go to different communities around the country that have done these. And when they look at it, eighty to eighty-five percent of the traffic are just people watching the videos. And so if you want to connect with people and you want this to be a communication tool. And we really couldn't, we didn't really have the time or the budget, but we also need to have a point where we say. Let's have the plan and have, you know, look at the aspirations that are, the aspirations that are written, because remember that the strategies aren't your aspirations. There is an aspiration here and we've got to go through and read it and say, you know, is, is that our aspiration, is that our future that we're hoping for? If that's our goal, then the next thing is, okay, we're going to break into a couple of bite sized pieces. And are these strategies going to get to those bite sized pieces and get that done? Or are we missing pieces or are we wasting time on something that goes through and says, you know, we're, we're continuing to do this, it's not working? Maybe we need to abandon that for a different idea, but I think. Uh, so I think a little, a roundabout way is, I think the. One way of using this as a better communication tool is that as we move forward the next year, two years, we say. We want this to be a better communication tool, we've agreed this is what our strategy is going forward for the next eight to ten years. Let's do some videos, let's find out how much it would cost, let's put the resources in, let's do these videos, let's do them right. And then we can track that online, you, you can track the number of hits and we can go through and say, how is that working? These are a little more complicated, as you pointed out, but these are actually designed for you and for the committees and for the staff, these are less for the public, these are for the wonks, who really want to get into. What exactly are we going to do for housing? Very specifically, we've got, you know, an encampment policy or we've got zoning. But we need to make an amendment to that and here are the things we should amend to make this better for X.
Um, and, and similarly, at the, at the, at the beginning. I said that what I think is most useful for people is to talk about the top level, uh. Concepts, the, the aspirations and the goals, so just since it's at the top of the page or the top of my stack. Land use is the first page, there are two aspirations. Montpelier will have a resilient historic urban center with complementary mixed uses. Commercial and industrial areas surrounded by residential neighborhoods to grow the community region. And the next one about protected and con- conserved areas, and so the question is. Do we think those are what we should be shooting for? Should we amend those because we're. We're on the round, we're on track with someone, or we're missing something, and I, I'm interested in hearing. Especially as, as we go forward, when people think about that, Adrian. Okay, Helen.
Yeah, uh, for having more feedback and create more inclusion, is it possible? Uh, starting from tomorrow until the next public hearing, if we can create QR codes? Uh, starting from tomorrow until the next public hearing, if we can create QR codes. And just like put maybe in front of the um. Each store or something, I don't know, then people can just like go and check this and give more feedback. And because uh Mike, you said we can see the uh how many people. Click, right? Then we we can just like kind of measure if anyone is really interested in seeing this or they are just. Kind of uh leaving the decision uh to the city council, right? Uh, can we do this or it will be too much? Just like a.
I wouldn't be able to. I'm, I'm actually gonna finally get two days off. So I'm taking Thursday and Friday off, so I'll be back Tuesday.
Okay, so we, it, your answer is no, I did not.
I wouldn't be able to, and Evelyn's not here and she would probably be the primary person I would have leaned on to help. The, to be able to. Put a a communication.
Okay.
Program together.
So between. May twenty first and May twenty eighth, there just aren't the days to do that.
Yeah, there just aren't the days or the staff.
However, we may not. May twenty eighth, folks, it may not be. The end of this process. We uh we certainly have more public hearings or more.
And. Sorry, but I, I don't want to interrupt. And sometimes like in the restaurants, they put things right on their table. We can ask them. Just to trying to reach out more uh more people, that's all. So, yeah, you're right, Jack. It doesn't have to be maybe this one. But I think it will be good if people see it and maybe we can put like, oh, this is the QR. QR code for the digital. If you wanna see the print version, please visit today. Call or something, I don't know, then we can collect more feedback. And then when we talk about, oh, public. Uh involvement and engagement, then we can have something like we, we did, we tried. And this is. The number of the engagement or something. Thanks.
Okay, now we're into it.
All right, so I have a couple things. So while this is on with Helen, so I think. What you're getting at is. I think proposing like an overall strategy for additional. You know, additional public engagement into the city plan. So I think that's like one idea, but I think there needs to be like a strategy.
Yeah.
Right? So like a QR code could be one of many strategies that we think about, but I think we're missing. The strategy for public. Input. But I think we need to talk about that and what that might look like. Um, the other thing is. You know, when I, and maybe Mike, if you have any data on this, but when I, you know. I am not an expert on all twelve chapters and nor do I ever want to be. And so when I look at, you know, the goals and aspirations, how do I know they're right? And more importantly, how do I know what's what's missing, right? So when I'm thinking of those terms of looking at this. I'm always, my mind works in gaps. So what's missing? What do we not know that's not on here? And I would love to understand from from you, like, and we did talk about this a little bit today, but really the process of. Like land use, who, like what experts in land use develop this? What experts in housing develop this? And then how was this? What was the feedback loop to ensure that we have everything in here that we want from the experts? And that, um, cause I don't know what I don't know. So I don't know what might be missing. So I don't know if I can make like a really strong educated decision on. Are these the right goals? Because I'm just not sure.
I mean, I. Mike, can I? Is it our first second?
I've not.
Um, I would just say like. Well, first, actually, I do have, I do have a question that I'll get to, but like, I mean, aspirations to land use, for example, actually, I do think that that's spot on. I mean, to me, this is like actually the fundamental land use policy of the state of Vermont. Like a dense center surrounded by conserved land or working landscape. Right? Like that is, I think, the fundamental tenant. Of Vermont land use. And I think that that's reflected in what does that look like in Montpelier? And I think it's an aspirational statement. And this is kind of my question, maybe it, you know, the way I'm trying to like think about, how is this all scaffolded?
If, if you're getting past. Your answer to Kip uh Adrian and moving into your own question.
Yeah.
I want to call on Carrie first because she's had her hand up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see.
Thank you. Um. So I I want to echo everybody's appreciation of all the work that has gone into this from the planning department and the. Planning Commission, it's. It's huge and it's a lot. So thank you. Um. And I I want to kind of back up to a little bit of a logistical structural question about how the plan is actually arranged. So, um. Someone was kind enough to print out. These gigantic pieces of paper that I see some other council members have, that is the. Implementation plan for each. Um, for each of the chapters, and that's where we see aspirations, goals and strategies. But then, if when you go to the online version and you and you look at the story storyboard, is that what it's called? And. You get a whole lot of other information that I don't really understand how it all works together. So for instance, when. Earlier in this meeting, we had members of the public talking about how the city plan says that we have a goal of. This many units and mostly rental. And I'm looking through my my implementation plan and it's not in here. And I realize, oh, it's in the other part that's sort of descriptive and sort of. And and it uses the word goal. But then when you read the goals. It is not there. And then also in the housing section in the story map. It talks about a housing for all approach, but I don't see anything mentioned. I don't see that phrase anywhere in the strategies. So what is the relationship here and what is the actual, what's the plan that we're going to work off of and? Um, how will the public understand? What it is that we're actually going to do with this?
All right, so I will, uh, yes, I will. Try to get at all of that. So if you were to look at at um. What's in statute as requirements, you, there are twelve required statutes and you have to have a plan. That talks about energy and a plan that talks about housing and a plan that talks about transportation, plan talks about land use. So. Um, you have requirements for all of those pieces to be in there. And as a part of those requirements, it talks about needing to have. Uh, certain conversations or certain discussions. And there are requirements that you have to have maps. In certain cases, transportation must have a plan and map for these these topics. Um. And so you have to talk about certain things. You can, you can certainly talk about more. Um, but you have to address certain things. And the plans are really. Uh, kind of. Broken into, there, there is a requirement for having an implementation plan and having implementation plans for each chapter. We have um developed what I would say is much more robust. Implementation plans than you would find in most other. City plans. Um, so there's been a lot more emphasis put on that because. Of the hope that we would be building this towards providing input and and making it a a usable document. Uh, if it doesn't have. This level of of detail and thought that goes into it, then. Um, it it becomes a little less useful. For accomplishing the goals. It's more. Uh, a visionary document, but without the action steps. Uh, this is trying to kind of balance that and have the information. Um, and then also having a detailed uh strategy of how we're going to accomplish it. And does that kind of answer the question, Carrie, for you?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, um, cause it seems like there's two different parts to this. There's the implementation plan, which is very easy for me to understand. It's got aspirations. And then that goes down to goals and then that goes down to strategies and it's really clear and easy to get my head around. But then it's got these other parts that are online. That use language that is similar like goals and. And stuff and and I don't know how those two connect. It's, it is the. And I, I'm sorry, I can't remember what it's called, a story. Map?
Story map or storyboard, yes.
Okay, so is that, is, and and you said that that's what's. Intended to be the part that the public sees. So is it that the language in there is just sort of descriptive and not really official? Or, um. And the implementation plan is kind of the actual official plan? I just under, I don't understand what the part on the story map is. If we're going to have things like that. We're going to describe goals, but then they're not actually showing up in implementation plan. What do they, what does that mean?
Yeah, uh, so I guess I would answer that by saying we, the hope is, the expectation is that we are. Very consistent and I'm, um, but there are certain. Certain things we could not put in the implementation plan, like, um, there's a requirement that. You have to have, you have to show forest blocks and you have to show. Um, wildlife connections. You have to have these certain maps. You have to have these. Plans talked about. So you can't just have the implementation plan. Um, and I'm glad you find the implementation plans. If you're understanding one side or the other, that's helpful. Um, how they connect is, um. Uh, it it, it was a li, it's a little bit of a challenge because the one piece is, uh. I mean, it could be a just a lot more typical of of a plan. Take any housing plan from the state and it's just. Eighty-five pages of of words, pictures and graphs. We certainly could go through and have a whole bunch of words, pictures and graphs that go into the plan side. And then still have this implementation plan. We chose to go more graphically and use the maps and. To take that approach and to try to summarize things, try to give the background. Um, now if we didn't in certain plans. So you know, the the plan context is really trying to give the background and. Explanation for why we end up with that aspiration and goals. But if we failed to make that. Clear, then that's something that. We would want to work on. Um, making clear either now or in the future.
Are you happy with that answer, Carrie? Yeah. Or that's, that's the answer for the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm set. Thank you very much, Mike.
Adrian, yeah.
Uh, my question wasn't answered, so I'll ask it a different way.
No, I I still had it written. I still had it written down. So if you want me to answer it, I can.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't want to look at land use because it sounds like, I'm like, that's fine, but like, who created the economic development chapter? Like, who created these like arts and culture? But some examples of maybe one that. I don't know. Maybe this, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the, the reason this took a long time, um. Is that there. Uh, the intent for how we were going to develop this plan was to use our. Um. Our local experts who are on the various committees. So, uh, the housing committee. Uh, to do the housing plan. And so we met with them. Long time ago and it was the Housing Task Force. And you know, that's some of the comments you've heard is that, you know, some of those had gotten dated because. We would do housing in twenty eighteen and, you know, here we are already in twenty twenty-three and some of that has gotten a little stale. So we had to go back and make some changes. So the various committees for the implementation plans. Uh. We had a format that the planning commission agreed to. This is what we want to try to do, which is why everything follows a consistent format. Those, you know, strategies, are we continuing? Are we doing something new? Um, the goals, are we improving things? Uh, are we maintaining things? So we had very tight rules as to what we were going to try to do. And then we went to each of the committees. To, to go through. Um, in sometimes three, four, five, six meetings. To go through, here's a draft. Based on the old plan, based on some new information of. Goals, aspirations, and what do you think are the strategies? And don't worry about, I mean, just pile them in. And what we did after that, after we had something. Of input from the committee was we started to combine them. Otherwise, we ended up with like seventy, because, oh, we should have a. Program to, for, I don't know, I think historic resources. We should have. Uh, walking tours and somebody else is like, we should have new signs that go up and we should have these. And at a certain point, we're like, these are all really talking about. Public outreach. We'll bundle all these up into a program that says, we really need to have a public outreach program that does these eight things. And so we would go through and kind of bundle them up and then we. The planning commission would review. The aspirations and the goals and make decisions whether or not. You know. This is what the Historic Preservation Commission said. Do we agree with it? Do we not agree with it? Uh, sometimes they'll make some tweaks and we adjust it and then we move on and we do. Uh, arts and culture was mostly based on the public arts master plan. Uh, Kirby Keaton actually has the planning commission chair. Took it under, you know, his own thing. He was like, I think we need to have that. We've got the plan. We'll put it together and uh I think he uh worked with. Uh, one of the folks from the arts commission to kind of basically codify that plan into the arts and culture. In the public input. When we got to that step, there were people that made recommended changes that we made some changes to. But the initial bulk of who developed land use, the answer is the planning commission in that case. Um, but housing was the housing committee, transportation, transportation committee, energy, energy committee. Um, and so on.
So we're, so what is missing? Cause I know the housing committee, we found those emails and I know that there were. Recommendations that weren't all included in this version. Um, but are there other chapters in this plan that? I just, I feel like, are there, are we missing stuff? Like, how do we know what we're missing? Like, I, I don't know, but I, I feel like. It's really concerning to me because I know that the housing. The housing chapter, I went to the planning committee or the public hearing for housing. There's so many comments. I read through your matrix. Thank you for doing that. And it's actually very helpful to see, um. Uh, Mike put together a matrix of comments received. Recommendations from the staff and then what was um completed. There's, I mean. I don't know, tons of, I don't know how many pages it's front and back, but. I I didn't go through and check like what the comments were and what was updated. It, but I'm only looking at the paper version. And so, but this isn't going to be the approved plan, the paper version, the one online is going to be the approved plan. So I feel like. I feel like I, I'm just concerned that I'm missing comments, I'm missing important suggestions. Um, that are relevant, that could have an impact on the future of a lot of these projects. So. How do I know what's missing?
Do you have an answer to that?
I, I, I mean, I'm not sure a hundred percent um about understanding what's, what's missing. Um, I mean, we have to meet the certain requirements and and I think. In some cases. Some of this is, uh, you know, not unlike when we do big changes to the zoning. At a certain point. You think you've got everything covered and you just start rolling with it. And if you realize something has been. Overlooked or omitted or just. That's just bad policy, then you go back and fix it. And, um. But I think. You know, some of this is, you know, the framework and making sure certain topics are addressed. Like I said, state law requires certain topics. Um. I've been doing this a while. There are certain topics that I know just make sense from as a professional planner that we need to make sure we're addressing and talking about things. Um. Jim.
Um, I'd like to address something that we haven't talked about. Um. And it's basically like. How do we get people involved? Well, let's take a look at what we're getting them involved with. A boring subject for most people. Lots of pages of stuff. Most people, unless you're like us in government and doing stuff like this, the average person finds this boring. So how do we make it an engaging community thing? You sell it as this is the topic, but we're gonna have a community gathering with food. Food always draws people. Um, you make it like. You're gonna have a period where you meet neighbors or other community members and then we go into. What do we want our city to look like down the road so that you have? A subject that is all brought into to help you develop, get public input. But you're not going to get a lot of public input by just saying, come to a city plan, because most people, young people, they're going to find this boring. I mean, I find it kind of boring and I said, here. So how can we make it a little more fun? And for us, that's what we did in two thousand ten. It was in the. It was in the National Life Cafeteria. There was a social time, there was some food. And people, it put people in a good mood and then they're like, okay, here's what we're really here for. Let's talk about what would you like to see in the city? What do you want the future? And that's when all the idea, all the boards were thrown up. And that's where you're going to get what's missing. Because you're going to hear things from people that nobody thought of. Of course, the hard part is separating the fantasy from the reality. But still, you're going to draw some gems out of it, but I don't see us drawing people by just saying, hey, we need help on the city plan. Come and do it. It's boring for most people to do. So how do we make it fun? Well, you draw them in, and then you say, okay, this is the real thing of the meeting. And you, that's, I think, how it was done. And it was just this huge crowd. People came in, they socialized, they got some food, and then, oh, yeah, this is going to be fun. Let's, and they started throwing ideas at the wall. And I'm just throwing that out because we're not going to get a lot of people except the, what I call the usual suspects, any other way. So we don't get any new ideas, and we don't find out what we're missing. Because some people will supply what we're missing, because everybody has their own view. I mean, yeah, that takes some organization, but that's how, in my opinion, I wasn't around for the start of this, but if somebody would have said, well, how are we going to do the public part? I would have said, we got to make it like it's a party. And get the people to come out and then tell them what it's about. But, you know, that's just me. How do we make it not boring? Anything simple.
Council members, anything else? Peter, I see you've got your hands, hand up. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I'd like to answer some of the questions. Carrie, very good spotting the inconsistencies in the language between the playbook, sorry, the, the, what is it called? Anyway, there's inconsistencies all over the place. And the reason is there isn't, hasn't been a professional copy editor on this project. So my first recommendation is get a copy editor. That's what copy editors do. They get rid of inconsistencies. Even the video has all kinds of inconsistencies. It says up here, it's the planning, and Mike says plan. Somebody, a professional copy editor will catch those inconsistencies, and that'll answer, that I think will answer your questions. Number two, the question of separating the complete, you know, complete this, complete this, complete this, do, you know, the difference between what we're already doing and what, and, and, and what's new. I think Ben had a really good idea about, you know, just put all the things that we're already doing in one place. I actually looked at the resiliency chapter, and ninety percent of what was there was things that was continue. It's not a small amount. So take a look at that, because it definitely makes it more boring to see all the continues and, and then look around, what's new here? Okay, third thing. Mike said, oh, well, you know, I'm going to be away. Evelyn isn't around or whatever. Staff capacity. I don't, I think Adrian hit the nail on the head. An online version like our city website, which is a nineteen nineties product, is going to require more staff capacity than we have. Mike used a tremendous amount of time of Evelyn's. Evelyn is the Communication Director. She and her, you know, I mean, you, you guys sort of started to eliminate some of the positions to support this kind of thing. I don't care what Mike says, this supporting this site is going to require capacity that the city does not really have. And then finally, appropriating, oh, committees. The first group to go back to with this plan and say, what's missing? Are the committees. And I don't just mean the Housing Committee, which already expressed their displeasure with the fact that they weren't, they didn't feel that they were heard. But how about the Social and Economic Justice Committee? How about the ADA Committee? How about the Homelessness Committee? How about the Complete Streets Committee? How about the committees that cut across the, these areas? Ask them what's missing, and you're going to hear what's missing. You're going to hear them raise questions about, you know, did you forget about, not everybody is able-bodied? And then just the second to last thing, I think Jim hit the nail right on the head. Not only was the way they did it in the two thousand ten plan really have an engagement process, but when that plan was done, I disagree with Mike completely, that that thing sat on the shelf. How does he know? It was printed. I've read that thing. I've talked to other people about it. It didn't just sit on the shelf. And I'll tell you where it got used a lot, unfortunately, which was at public hearings. People like Tom Weiss would say, it says right here in the master plan, X, Y, Z, and this is contradicting it. A lot of people use that plan. Maybe not in the way that I would have liked them to use a plan, but it was used. And you can't say, oh, well, the, the idea that it wasn't used online. Because nobody could find it online, because our, our website's a mess. So I think Jim's idea of, of, of really a great process, something like what Burke and White did, Whitenberg did for Country Club Road. And then finally, what this plan, what's missing from this plan? Vision. That's what's missing from this plan. Vision. Now, I sent an email out to you guys, or to some of you, in which I just, I just quickly brainstormed some questions that, that I would have asked if I were, if I'd been the planning director. I would have asked.
Peter, I don't want you to take.
I'll send it.
You send it, yeah, thank you.
All right, those are some thoughts for.
Jack, can I make a ten second comment?
Yes, is it going to be ten seconds?
What role, if any, did the winning concept plan from the Montpelier twenty fifty, twenty thirty Net Zero competitions, which was won by the Team Bridges, what role did that play in crafting this plan? You know, was Team Bridges invited or considered for contracting, crafting a plan to implement that fully engaged, award-winning competition product?
Okay, fair, fair enough. That's part of the process. It was not an official city activity, but, but fair enough. All right, folks. There's a lot to take up. My, my prediction right now is that we're not going to be finished with this on May twenty eighth. But we shall see. But I think we, that's where we need to be for this part of this conversation. And so we can move to city council reports, starting down your end this time, Karen.
No report, thank you.
Yeah. Just a couple of quick things. The Subcommittee Searching for a Search Firm met today. We, we received fourteen proposals, narrowed it down to four finalists, have interviewed those finalists, and are prepared to make a recommendation at our next meeting. So we're real excited about that and look forward to hearing your thoughts on, on the proposal. The other thing I would say is just an update from the Montpelier Commission on Recovery and Resilience. Secretary Curly did submit a letter of interest in the federal building to GSA. Was received, as did the bill wrote a letter of support for that. And I think the next step, my understanding would be a meeting with GSA, ACCD. Presumably the commission, and I would assume the city, if they were, if there was interest. And then, you know, just one thing, the other thing I just wanted to say, I'm really sorry to have missed the last meeting and just really appreciated people's words about Nathan Suter. You know, visiting hours for Nathan's family was last night. I've never seen anything like it. I couldn't even put a number on it, but for a solid three hours, there was a line down St. Paul Street that I couldn't see the end of. And I think that's just a testament to the kind of person and leader that he was. One of the things I've been reflecting on in the search committee was a question that we asked of one of the consultants, actually all of the consultants, we asked them all the same question, but one answer that really struck with me was, you know, the question was, what can we do as a community to ensure a successful search for our next city manager? And what I heard someone say is to always remember that it is a two-way interview. That we're interviewing them to find the qualities that we want, and they're interviewing us for the qualities that they want, and to determine what kind of community they want to be a part of for the future. And, you know, thinking about public engagement, why people do things, why people don't, and what leadership in our community looks like from somebody like Nathan, I think is really important to reflect on as we look for our next city manager. That's going to be really important, whatever our plan ends up looking. Thanks.
I just attended a new committee I'm on, and it's not a city committee, so it isn't under us, so it's not adding to us, but it's a committee that's added to me, and it's the one with the downtown merchants. They asked for a counselor to join them, and so having been a business downtown, having gone through the flood, I have some things in common, having lived downtown, I thought I probably was the best fit, so I joined him. They've drawn up a whole bunch of questions they're going to send out to the business community to ask how they want to deal with things. And so the meeting was just to kind of do that and get a survey out to them, and then bring in partners to talk about how they can improve the situation downtown, because when you're talking to them and you're sitting among them, it's a little more dire than you think. So I'll, I'll keep reporting. We have, we're going to be meeting every single week. Because it's that important, and it's that, it's that, it needs to happen that fast, something. Because they're just dying on the vine. That's all.
Thanks, Jim. So. Adrian?
So I just wanted to provide an update. So through the Commission for Recovery and Resilience Group, John Copans is leading a new initiative called the Montpelier Neighbor Net. If you all remember the old CANS network during the pandemic, so that's getting revitalized. And I'm part of that group, and we're putting together a toolkit to be a local leader in your neighborhood, self-defined, of what a neighbor looks like. But I wanted to invite you all, and I will send this out in email. We are having a kickoff on Saturday, June seventh, from two to four at the College Green, where we will have some best practices in our neighborhoods in Montpelier on, you know, how local leaders are supporting their neighbors through emergency response. We have some good ideas around like really fun things like barbecues and garage sales, but how do you do that as a neighborhood? Who are the leaders? How to get engaged in your neighborhood? What is a neighborhood? Very, very important in terms of emergency response, but also in the sense of community and loneliness. So get to know your neighbors, get to know the people next door. Talk to them, know their names, know what they might need in case of an emergency. And so we are trying to build that in Montpelier to be a sustainable way of who we are and how we behave with each other and how we support each other in Montpelier. So once again, the kickoff is Saturday, June seventh, from two to four at the College Green. And if it rains, it'll be at the Performing Arts Hub, which is across the street. So I would love for you all to join. You all live in a neighborhood in Montpelier, and so it's a good way to get out, to meet your neighbors, and also hear what's going on.
Can I give you a follow-up?
Yeah.
I want to give a kudos to Peter Kellman. We're already way ahead of everybody.
He is, he is, he is very active.
So Peter, thank you for that. You have already got, you've had us on that for, I don't know, two years now. And we have a well-organized neighborhood because of him. So I just wanted to say thank you, Peter, and give you some recognition on that.
Okay. Carrie?
No reports tonight, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And no mayor's report tonight. City clerk?
No.
City manager?
I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity in scheduling for the strategic plan. I guess, dates. Or just start the workshop. So we talked about a few dates at the last meeting. We talked about potentially June fourth. And maybe some of the other Wednesdays in June. And so I just wanted to get a sense of where people are at, if that, if those dates might sound good. And I'm actually trying to pull my calendar now as we speak, so I can just kind of get a sense of, you know, what that looks like.
June fourth, Wednesday?
It is.
Sooner the better.
So yeah, we've got June fourth and eighteenth, because we've got meetings on the eleventh and twenty fifth.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I'm, for what it's worth, I have a work commitment on the evening of the fourth.
Yeah, I was going to suggest the eighteenth, because that'll give us a week off. Because we've got last week, this week, next week. If we if we do the eighteenth, then that means we at least have one week after, between three blocks of, or two blocks of three weeks in a row.
I'm just wondering, can we switch a meeting around one of our regular meetings, move it back and move the other one up? Is that possible?
Kelly and I'll.
To get it earlier? In other words, not where we are going to have a regular meeting earlier than the eighteenth, have that be the strategic one and move the regular meeting back, you know, and something like that, just to get it going earlier, that's all.
Want to talk about that on Monday or Tuesday?
Yes, that would be great.
We'll talk about that on Tuesday. At our regular weekly meeting.
Can I make just one quick suggestion about that? Just thinking about like getting started early, there might be other ways to do that. Like if Kelly, maybe you, I don't know, like drafted guiding questions for us, or thought, you know, like we could all be individually kind of doing some homework at home to come to a meeting like fully prepared to be like, these are the priorities, or, you know what I mean? Just in some way to facilitate a faster process.
Kind of ready to go, but that's all right. All right. I think we're all set now. It is nine thirty-two PM, and we are adjourned.